All right, given her enough time. Good evening. I'm Cindy Darling, Mayor of Walnut, the City of Walnut Creek, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber. The meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting, I wanted to welcome everybody and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item that's on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the City Council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled Public Communication, which is for public comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting, if necessary. If you desire to provide a public comment, please complete a speaker identification card, your handy little yellow cards, and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Wait your turn, and then you approach the lectern. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record. You'll have two minutes to address the City Council. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. The City Council handbook outlines decorum expected in the council chambers and can be found on our website. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use threatening, profane, or abusive language, which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. So now, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk Elena Brenson, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davini?
Here.
Councilmember Francois is absent. Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilk?
Here.
And Mayor Darling.
I'm here, and I have heard from Councilmember Francois that he is expecting to be here, traffic permitting. So, we'll move on to our first proclamation. As we all know, this is the month where we celebrate with our housing folks. Oops, that's Public Works. We're going to celebrate housing first. Because it is Affordable Housing Month, and Jan and I have spent the whole day together today, so, working on affordable housing. So, quality, affordable homes are vital to a healthy, safe, and racially just community. They foster racially and economically just community for all, even before our current high inflation rates. Increasing housing costs have led longtime residents to be displaced, to live in overcrowded houses, or experience homelessness, threatening our region's diversity and economic opportunity. So, stable homes is the goal here. It's the solution to homelessness. It's the solution to keeping our kids healthy. And it's the solution to building our community, having a place where everybody can both live and work, so people don't have to drive all the way to Tracy to find a place to live. We are experiencing a time when a lot of our federal funding sources are under risk, and, you know, we're still not sure exactly what's going to happen there. But it makes the role of the city and the other local and regional governments all that much more important in producing, preserving, and protecting affordable housing opportunities for our low-income residents. And tonight, we have Jan Warren from the... Who are you from tonight? Are you from the Interfaith Housing Coalition or the Affordable Housing? Why don't you come up and tell us who you're representing tonight, Jan?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jan Warren, and I'm Chair of the Multifaith Action, Housing, and Shelter Task Force.
That's why I couldn't remember that. That's really a...
I'm also a member of Lafayette Christian Church, and my church is also a member of EPO, East Bay Housing Organization, and we all just say EPO. It's a lot shorter. It's a... EPO is a member-driven organization convening a diverse coalition that advocates to produce, preserve, and protect affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities in the East Bay. The membership is over 400 individuals and organizations, which includes nonprofit affordable housing developers, social service organizations, advocacy groups, faith institutions, and residents of affordable housing across Alameda and Contra Costa County. So you ought to be able to slip in there somewhere. It is my pleasure tonight to thank the City Council of Walnut Creek for recognizing Affordable Housing Month and affirming your commitment to affordable housing, year after year after year. I'm particularly happy to be able to receive this proclamation on EPO's behalf as a 39-year resident in support of affordable housing in the City of Walnut Creek. EPO and partners have created more than 30 public events this month across the East Bay to educate our community about key aspects of affordable housing and housing justice. Mayor Darling, just this morning, we were at a... She was on the panel. I was out in the audience. We had a great sharing and discussion on reimagining sacred faith lands along with collaboration can lead to affordable, permanent cottage communities. This year, EPO celebrates its 41st birthday. They've been working at this a long time. There is still time to go to EPO, e b h o dot org, to check out the activities. They're going till the end of the month. Really wonderful opportunities. Or you can sign up as a member. You can check out their lunch and learn, and you can find links to success stories. So I want everyone here to celebrate and thank the Walnut Creek City Council for continuing their commitment to support a vision of a racially and economically just East Bay where everyone has access to a safe, stable, and affordable home, which is gracious.
Thank you. Hold on. Jan, we're not done yet. I'm going to meet you up there. Did anybody else want to add anything to? I think we're... I'll come up here.
All right. I'll give you a hug. All right. I'm so glad COVID got gone.
I know. Here you are, ma'am. Read it, enjoy it, and thank you for all that you do.
Have you got crayons?
All right. The next presentation is Public Works. Public Works is something that is so important to our city. It is something that we all take for granted every day of the week. It's the infrastructure, the facilities, the parks, the open spaces, the services that are important in making this a sustainable and resilient community that we are. It contributes to public health. It contributes to the high quality of life, the well-being of people. It's why my family moved to Walnut Creek. And we couldn't have all this infrastructure without a dedicated crew. We have 213 miles of streets, 171 miles of street marking. I don't know how those don't match, but, you know, it ought to. But 1650 street lights, 100 signalized intersections, 9,500 traffic signs that have to be replaced on a regular basis, parking meters, street sweeping, catch basins, storm drains. We're always finding more storm drains, is what I thought was interesting when I took the tour. Parking lots, buildings, off-road, on-road vehicles, equipment items, 22 parks and green belts, over 300 acres, and nearly 3,000 acres of open space, with nine miles of paved trail and 43 miles of unpaved trail, and over 30,000 trees, and a whole bunch of rattlesnakes. We are really indebted to our staff for maintaining these facilities, for planning for their future expansion, and for being the people that, when it starts to rain or things catch on fire or stuff just happens, are out there with all their equipment, ready day in and day out to step forward and take care of us all. So I want to call Rich Payne up to receive this proclamation.
There you go. Thank you.
Can I just say a couple things?
Yeah, go ahead and say it.
Thank you, Mayor Darling. Members of the council, my name's Rich Payne. I'm the Director of Public Works, and I stand up here honored to be able to receive this proclamation on behalf of the entire Public Works team. And just being able to represent such a talented, dedicated team is just a privilege to me. This proclamation, National Public Works Week, started yesterday, and we're sort of celebrating all week, but just really recognizing the efforts of our staff. Oftentimes, I think the public doesn't realize a lot, all the stuff that happens behind the scenes. I always like to look at Public Works as sort of the stagehands behind the performance, and that's what we do. And it's those little things that make Walnut Creek special. It's the... You know, when they come into the city, citizens visit the city. It's clean. It's well taken care of. And it takes a lot of dedication from our city staff, specifically Public Works, to be able to do that. I want to thank the support that we get from our council and our city manager. And we really feel like there's a lot of trust, and you show that in the way that you support our budgets, the way you support us in the public. And so, we really appreciate that. And I know that I represent my entire staff in thanking you for that. So with that said, I want to thank you again for this proclamation, and good evening.
Thank you, Rich. I think Cindy Silva has something that...
Yes.
Thank you to you and your team. And would you like to explain to the public how we can have more lane miles of roads than lane miles of road markings? And you can use my street as an example.
Okay. So there's some neighborhoods that don't have center markings. So, that's how it is. So primarily, there's special streets in neighborhoods, typically the more traveled streets, or main arterials, collectors, that sort of thing.
I knew there was a reason for this. Anyway, thank you, Rich, for you and all your staff, from all of us here. All right. At this time, I'd like to invite Amelia Whalen, the Wellness Coordinator at Los Lomas High School, and Stacy Schreppi, the newest board member of the Akalani's Union High School District, to come and give us a presentation on what's going on down at Los Lomas with the Wellness Center and the school.
Thank you so much for having me, and Stacy, of course.
Thank you, Mayor Darling, for inviting us. Mayor Pro Tem Wilk and Councilmembers Davini and Silva, we appreciate being here tonight.
So, thank you so much for having us. Wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the Wellness Center at Los Lomas High School, ways that we've been supporting youth within our community, and also, of course, thank you guys for your support of our program over the years. Thank you. All right. So really, what we are is we're a school-based mental health center, and we support Los Lomas students for essentially any challenge, any issue, anything they might be facing or dealing with. So students will often seek help or be referred to us for help for an array of issues that include anxiety, depression, you know, even suicidality, other safety issues, grief and loss, body image, alcohol and other drugs. We actually have specific programming related to that that I can talk about a little bit more. Peer and family relationships, anger management, and just any kind of major life transitions. You know, we often see that with high school students when they're getting ready to launch. The transition to college can be incredibly stressful. And on the other side of that, transitioning from eighth grade to high school can be a stressor as well. So that's another thing we really look to support kids with. But really, all different issues come through the door, all different ways to support kids, and we're there for them. And so, this is the data from last school year, and because the data from this year is still preliminary. But I'd say that it's on par with what we were seeing then. So Los Lomas has approximately 1,600 students. Wellness Center had approximately 2,870 visits last school year for mental health support specifically. And of that, a total of 275 unique students were referred to Wellness, but in terms of who accessed services, so on their own volition, in addition to referrals, we're looking at over 500 unique students access some form of mental health support through the Wellness Center. So we're a very highly utilized resource on the school campus. There's a lot of trust between teachers and the community and our program. Students are frequently referred by friends as well, which to me is like one of the most powerful things that we've seen as well. All right. So in terms of what services we provide, so we do provide direct clinical services through the Wellness Center. These are provided through myself. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. There's also what's called an intake specialist who does kind of front-of-house triage and initial support with students, kind of directing them to where they need to go. But also, we're staffed by interns who are either working towards graduate degrees in counseling or some form of mental health, or post-masters interns. People actually tend to return to intern for us after they receive their master's degree. They kind of fall in love with the center and the work and just don't want to leave us. But in terms of what those clinical services look like, we offer ongoing counseling. So that can be in the form of both individual and group therapy, where a student or group of students is assigned to a clinician who meets with them on an ongoing basis. We also provide drop-in support. So if a student needs to take a break during the school day, maybe they're stressed out, maybe they need to talk to somebody, they can come down at any point during the day and have access to the space, or request an appointment. And we are able to offer students drop-in appointments when they come to the center. So it's pretty instantaneous, the support that they're able to receive. In addition to that, we just kind of provide a calming environment between classes. You know, so you can see these lovely thumbnails that I wish I could take credit for, but I'm no good with Canva. But, you know, we'll have different events like Mindful Monday, where there's a guided meditation at lunch. We do Time Out Tuesday, where it's really kind of directive, thoughtful, sort of like calming activities that also kind of can reinforce any coping skills students might be working on. Therapeutic Thursday is similar. Fish Tank Friday is a very popular one. That's where we livestream the Monterey Bay Aquarium and play very calming music. Students love it. Whenever it's postponed, they're always like ones that coming back. So that's something that we provide as well. We also do a lot of case management work. You know, we want to connect families and students with resources and support outside of what we have on the school campus. We aren't always in the best position to help in certain ways if we're looking at things like, you know, maybe food insecurity or other resource issues. So much of what we do is connect them with community-based organizations or help them navigate maybe like their insurance in terms of accessing outside mental health support. So one of the big things that we focus on is really youth engagement and youth programming, and ensuring that what we do is incredibly responsive to what our kids need according to themselves, and also give them the opportunity to communicate with each other. So really, what we try and do is look at the presenting problems that we're seeing amongst our youth, but then really focus on activism and engagement with them. So we have a number of student groups that are housed through Wellness that we support. We really try and like, you know, just support the kids in leading those efforts, and we've found it to be incredibly effective. One of the groups that we run is called Bring Change to Mind. So that's actually a nonprofit organization that seeks to reduce the stigma of mental health on high school campuses. We were one of the first schools in the state to be part of this program. I believe it was about seven years ago. We were one of the first ones. We were part of the pilot study. It's lovely. They train our students. They provide us with grant money. They're a really phenomenal community partner. So they support us in terms of having a student club that seeks to reduce the stigma around mental health. We have a Leadership Wellness Committee. So within our leadership program, we have a group of students dedicated to increasing mental health awareness on campus and reducing stigma. They're also involved in many of the other groups. We have the Tobacco Use and Prevention Education Program, which is through County Office of Ed. They do a lot of work around educating fellow students around the hazards of vaping and other substance use issues. We've been a partner with them for a long time as well. And through them are, you know, through County Office of Ed, we engage in other programming to support students. A new program we have this year that I'm very excited about is Substance-Free Athletics, specifically a program called Protect Your Game, where it's student athletes educating other student athletes about the hazards of substance use, but it's really grounded in terms of athletic performance and impact it has on them as an athlete. Another thing that we're doing, and this is something I can delve into a little bit more, is as part of like our fentanyl and naloxone awareness initiative, is we have a group of peer educators that are focused on educating fellow students about the hazards of counterfeit pills and also about naloxone through the nonprofit organization... Excuse me. The nonprofit organization, Song for Charlie. Another group we have through Wellness is our English Language Learner Student Association. It's kind of part of a larger newcomer initiative we're looking to have on our campus. You know, we're the English Language Learner Magnet School within the district. So much of what we look at is kind of aligning wellness programming and protocol, along with when we have newer students coming in, how to make them feel welcome, make them feel successful in our school environment. And we also do collaboration with other student organizations. So we'll reach out to various student groups, ask them if they have a vision maybe for an event or an activity they'd like to have, and we work alongside them in planning that. And one of the big things we've done that with is our Wellness Fair that we had just a couple weeks ago, where it was community partners, student groups. Hundreds of students attended. It was a huge success. So I mentioned this briefly. This is something I'm particularly proud of us accomplishing at our school. But, you know, we've been working on a fentanyl and Narcan awareness initiative for many years now. What we've done is we've looked at kind of spreading the word, increasing knowledge in terms of teachers, parents, and students in a very methodical way. With our teachers, Wellness has led professional development efforts in terms of educating them about signs of overdose, how to administer naloxone, and about the fentanyl crisis in general. All of our teachers were trained in terms of how to administer Narcan, and also, it was distributed to interested staff members. For parents, we've focused a lot on education for them. We've had a community panel education night. We've two years in a row now, which what it was was we had a woman from the nonprofit organization, Song for Charlie, come out, and she spoke a bit about kind of her experience losing her son to an overdose. I was there as representative of the school. Walnut Creek Police Department provided an officer as well. And what it was is we showed a documentary from the nonprofit organization, and then parents had an opportunity to ask questions of the panel. We've done that a couple of years. It was very well received and well attended. We've also planned for virtual parent education nights around this topic that, you know, are accessible by recording and live for maybe those of... For people who can't attend in person who want that information. We've done a lot of work with students around this as well. You know, we've done academies, which essentially what that is is it's almost like a tutorial period worked into our school day, almost like office hours. But what we do in Wellness is we really utilize that time to provide psychoed, like, you know, educational opportunities to students and other kinds of support. So while we have them on an array of topics, one of the things that we've focused on is having fentanyl awareness academies. And we've actually brought community partners in to host those for students. So we've had National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse. A woman from there presented in the past. The Meds Coalition from Contra Costa County, they came through as well. We've also helped with school assemblies, Song for Charlie. The woman who was at the parent night spoke to our students and shared her story and important information about this. And we've developed a peer awareness campaign, which is something particularly exciting. We're actually piloting curriculum from the nonprofit, Song for Charlie, for peer educators, leading discussions about the topic and providing additional information. And then also, the development and distribution of educational materials. You'll notice the flyer on there. We actually worked with our peer educators and had them create that to make other students aware that there was Narcan on campus in case they suspected overdose, so they could tell a trusted adult. And to the right of that, you'll see me. Actually, the Department of Education was interested in terms of how we were approaching this issue and asked that we, you know, we share kind of what we've been doing at Los Lomas. All right. What else do we do? So, you know, we provide health supplies to students. We do a lot of work with teachers and staff as well. You know, they have more contact with the kids than we do. I always tell them, like, you didn't realize you were going to be a mental health professional when you went into the field. So really, a lot of what we do is we do professional development with them. We've trained them around trauma-informed classroom. You know, we do a suicide prevention, mental health awareness training with them every year. We also let them know about our services, so they can connect students with us if they think that they'd benefit. We also provide teacher and staff with consultation. So if there's a student who maybe they're concerned about, they can meet with us. We can talk about the circumstances, kind of work alongside them in terms of getting the kid the support that they need in class. We also provide teachers and staff with resources and referrals, not just like for their own position as an educator, but for themselves as people. And we also do a lot of interdepartmental collaboration. So like, we've done a lot of work with the English Language Department this year around kind of our newcomers program. And then also, we do a lot of consultation and collaboration outside of the school and outside of the district. County Office of Ed frequently, you know, connects other schools with us who are looking to get Wellness Centers off the ground in terms of what our protocol is and our programming, and just able to answer general questions for those of... For others who are interested in doing what we do. So, thank you guys for your support. You know, the city's been supportive of mental health services at Los Lomas long before the Wellness Centers existed, but it's continued since. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without you. So thank you for having me here and giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we do.
Thank you for all you do for our students. I think we all agree. It's something that's super important for them. Were there any questions for the Los Lomas presenters? Councilmember Silva?
I'll just echo the mayor's comments of thank you. My daughter went to Los Lomas. I was PTA president years ago. And we called it a crisis center there. And I think this is so important, that you've changed the focus. You've said you're going to get ahead of it. And that mental health and wellness are positive things, not negative things. When you say it's a crisis center, you're waiting until something goes wrong to do something. And so, thank you. And I particularly am impressed with the English Students Association, because Los Lomas is the... Of four high schools in the Akalani's District, Los Lomas is, you called it the Magnet School, for all of the English language stu... English is the second language back in the eons, students. And you're always worried about how they were adapting to the challenges of being in high school and arriving in California and the United States and being an English language learner and having to adjust to both things and high school at the same time, which is three challenges. And so, thank you for doing all this and being a model and a leader in the world.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say, I've had the opportunity to meet with Amelia and go to the wellness center, and it's just terrific, a couple of times that I've been able to be over there and just to see what's offered now that was never offered when I was in high school. And it was things that were trying to be reactive then, and now to see the proactiveness is just terrific. So thank you so much for what you're doing, today's students and tomorrow's students.
Thank you. Councilmember DeFini?
Yeah, I echo those those sentiments. Thank you for what you're doing, so very inspiring, hearing all of the services that you're providing. And I was really struck by the the twenty-seven or twenty-eight hundred visits per year. I mean, it shows that you've created a culture there that kids feel comfortable going to the wellness center. And I think that's that's really exciting, I guess, to hear, or really uplifting. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you guys very much for coming to present tonight. And thank you for all you do to keep our kids safe. So, thank you very much. We'll give them a round. And now, we're at the time where I'm going to ask Carolyn Jackson, Carolyn Jackson, the interim director of Arts and Rec, to make a presentation at the council on the Leshur Center Strategic Plan update.
Thank you, Mayor Darling, and good evening, city council members. Carolyn Jackson, Leshur Center General Manager and interim Arts and Recreation Director. I'm pleased to be here tonight to update you on the Leshur Center Strategic Plan. And I'm joined by Emily Enders, Bedford Gallery Curator of Exhibition and Programs, and Peggy White, Executive Director of our nonprofit partner Diablo Regional Arts Association. Unfortunately, Matt Morrow, Center Rep Artistic Director, is unable to be here tonight due to a family emergency, but we have plenty of Center Rep updates for you regardless. Thank you, Eleanor. So tonight, we're going to briefly touch on the development of the strategic plan, where we stand on key priorities within the plan, some recent successes that tie back to the goals identified in the plan, and then look ahead to the Center's thirty-fifth anniversary year. After addressing any questions from council, I will also welcome representatives from the Leshur Foundation and Diablo Regional Arts Association Board of Directors to share some remarks. Before we dive in to all of the strategic plan, I did want to touch on how the Leshur Center is essential to the city council's priority of economic development and downtown vitality. The city has participated in the Americans for the Arts Study Arts and Economic Prosperity for six cycles now. It's a study that's done nationally every five or so years. And the last result from 2022 showed that in the city of Walnut Creek, the nonprofit arts and culture sector generated thirty-six point one million dollars in economic activity. And when we think about how arts and culture ties into local business and our economy, think about your own attendance at events. If you go to see a show at the Leshur Center, you likely are going to do something else as well. At least probably pay for parking, but maybe go out to dinner, get a cocktail beforehand, and maybe you needed to pay for a pet sitter or babysitter in order to have that night out. And so, as part of the study, we learned that attendees, when they are coming to Walnut Creek for arts and culture, they are spending on average thirty-four point six four dollars per person, per event, in addition to the price of the ticket. So this is money that's going directly into our downtown economy. So the strategic plan really came out of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Leshur Center was one of the first venues and businesses to close and one of the very last to reopen. And as part of that, the city and Diablo Regional Arts Association were looking at how will we come back strong from such a significant event? And really decided together to focus on a strategic planning effort so that we would be prepared to attract audiences back to the center when we reopened and also attract new audiences. Together, we selected the DeVos Institute of Arts Management to develop the plan. And we were fortunate to have Michael Kaiser, the former president of the Kennedy Center, directly involved in our strategic planning effort and able to rely on his expertise. And council received that strategic plan and accepted it in February of 2022. So we're about three years in now. At the core of the plan is the concept of the cycle, where we start by investing in high-quality artistic programming that we then market strategically and aggressively in order to attract new audiences. And then we turn that audience into a family of audience members and donors who come back to us year after year because they're excited and engaged by the work that we're doing. And that family leads to financial investment, either in the form of donations or repeat ticket sales. And then we continue to invest those financial rewards back into the great art, and the cycle continues. When we think about the initial presentation to council, we have achieved a number of the things that were identified as the top priorities of the plan. We have launched the Headliner Series, which moved us to be a presenter of artists on our stages rather than more solely a rental opportunity. And we now present nationally and internationally known artists throughout the year. We also launched the Leshur Center in Your Neighborhood Outreach Program, bringing great art and artists out of the building into our community and schools and various community centers. And we launched a major, major, major aspirational festival in the form of Fiesta Cultural, one of the largest festivals that the center has ever attempted. And we are now looking ahead to the third year this June of that major festival. And sneak peek, there's more things coming that you'll hear about later in the presentation. We developed a unified brand between the Leshur Center and its resident programs and Diablo Regional Arts Association. And we just transitioned to a unified database and ticketing software where we will have a fuller picture of our patrons, both their attendance and their support in terms of donations. We, as part of that, merged our kind of separate and siloed development activity and fundraising efforts so that we had a more cohesive message. And a big one, we established the center's first-ever marketing department with a full-time marketing supervisor. And we're really seeing the results of having an experienced, knowledgeable person leading our marketing in over the last year or so. It did take us a bit to get through all the approvals and recruitments and things, but it's really starting to show the results. Stepping in here for Matt to cover Center Rep. A major facet of the strategic plan as it related to Center Rep was developing more collaborations, co-productions, and strategic partnerships, which we have launched this year when we've partnered with three regional theater powerhouses. For the production of Dragon Lady, we partnered with Marin Theater as well as Geffen Playhouse in Los Angeles. And that production won a San Francisco Bay Area Critics Circle Award for Best Solo Show. We're currently in the midst of a world premiere production of that is a partnership with Tony Award-winning theater work Silicon Valley. That's Happy Pleasant Valley, a senior sex scandal murder mystery musical. And yes, it is as hilarious as the title. We're looking forward to that opening in June. We also partnered with Pemberley Productions to bring The Unfair Advantage, which was an immersive sleight-of-hand magic show. And it was actually another opportunity to collaborate internally because it took place in the storage area of the Bedford Gallery and quite a surprise to attendees when they discovered that's where they were upon their exit. Also connected to the strategic plan, here we go, is that we have had two world premieres in this season. In addition to Happy Pleasant Valley, we had Froggy, which you see pictured here, and the world premiere of Jennifer Haley's work. We received national attention in the American Theater Magazine for this production and its elements tying together such an immersive projected environment. And that was the first feature that Center Rep has ever received in that national publication. And beyond meeting its ticket sale projections, which we were very pleased about, it was also lauded by local critics and featured on the cover of San Francisco Chronicle's Datebook section twice in one week. As we close out this year, we're thrilled to share that Center Rep subscriptions are up eleven percent over last year, which is not the trend that most theaters are experiencing right now. So we're very happy to see that response. And recent productions have averaged sixteen percent of the audience being first-time ticket buyers to any Leshur Center event. So not just to a Center Rep production, but to anything at the Leshur Center. So as we look to our thirty-fifth anniversary year of the Leshur Center, we know that Center Rep is in a strong position. And we look forward to sharing in a little bit what you can expect there. Now I'm going to hand it to Emily so she can discuss some successes from Bedford Gallery.
Good evening, council members. For the record, Emily Enders, Curator of Exhibitions and Programs at Bedford Gallery. At Bedford Gallery, we've continued to invest in developing our national reach with our traveling exhibition program and now travel one Bedford-curated exhibition per season. I'm thrilled to share that Rediscovering Native America: Stories in Motion with the Red Road Project is now part of our group of traveling exhibitions. And the show will open at the CDC Museum in Atlanta, Georgia this August. Exhibitions such as this and our current show, Limitless: Celebrating Artists with Disabilities, and two shows in our upcoming season reflect our emphasis on curating exhibitions and hosting programs that celebrate and expand representation at the gallery. We recently launched two anchor programs to expand our audiences, including a yoga and sound healing event and quarterly cocktails and conversation with industry professionals. Additionally, in an effort to better integrate programming across Leshur Center, Center Rep, and the gallery, a key initiative of the of the strategic plan, we hosted Contemporary Voices, a native artist panel discussion, and Good Medicine, a night of live native stand-up in association with Rediscovering Native America. To speak on other exciting program successes, I'll pass it to Peggy White, DRAA Executive Director.
Have to bring this down. Thank you, Emily. You do such great things in the Bedford Gallery. And I also want to take a moment and thank Carolyn Jackson for being such a terrific leader and partner. I am so thrilled to be here to talk to you about the Headliner Series, which we launched in 2022. And the total audience is the first year around four thousand seven hundred. To date, we've welcomed over thirty-two thousand audience members to the Headliner Series and over fourteen thousand community members to the last two years of Fiesta Cultural. We are the Bay Area home for the world-renowned Dan Siddle Harlem, producer of the smash-hit College Notes, which just received twenty million views on social media, which is very exciting, bringing a lot of new audiences. We've also brought in major artists such as Diane Reeves, Lael Lovett, Chris Bodie, Valley Hispanico, everybody's heard of Stage, just to name a few, just just the icing of the cake. Arts education is the cornerstone of our strategic plan. And increasing access to the arts is absolutely fundamental to the work we do. We've expanded the Pay What You Can offerings available in the Bedford Gallery, also Center Rep and the Headliners. Thanks to a generous challenge grant from one of our wonderful board members, Mike Weintraub and his wife Paula, we launched the Headliner Series and the Leshur in Your Neighbor program in 2024. We've reached thousands of students and seniors and other community members by bringing world-class artists out of the center directly to them. This Growth and Education Program in at-risk builds on the existing robust school tool program at the Bedford Gallery and also the beloved Arts Access Schooltime Program for Title I Schools. The success would not be possible without the strong private-public partnership of the city that DRAA shares that has supported us for over and been a robust partnership for over three decades. In particular, I also would like to thank our sponsors, the Leshur Foundation. We're so thrilled to have Steve Leshur on the staff here for their early support of the STRIP plan and also their ongoing support, not only for the center, but for the arts in Contra Costa County. We're also grateful for our presenting sponsor, Kaiser Menente and Freedom Appliance, as well as the DRAA Board of Directors. We're so thrilled to have Angie Coffey at the helm as her president this year, who also is very impactful and makes some great things happen. So more and more good things to come. Now, let's moving, looking ahead, the thirty-fifth anniversary season. We are so thrilled, this is gonna, we've got a lot of great things happening. We'll be celebrating all year long with a lot of the exciting initiatives, exciting kickoff. And our birthday month is going to be super big. In October, the annual Broadway Gala will be on October fourth, 2025. To date, the twenty-thirty-fifth anniversary of the Leshur Center, which opened October fourth, nineteen ninety. Isn't that fantastic? Tony Award winner James Monroe Echelhart will be our featured headliner. He shot to Broadway stardom in The Unforgettable Genie in Disney's Aladdin, where he earned a Tony Award. He was most recently nominated as a leading actor for A Wonderful World, the Louis Armstrong musical, for a Tony. We'll find out if he'll win the Tony on June eighth, fingers crossed, which is very exciting. The icing on the cake is he performed in Center Rep's production of Sweet Charity in two thousand thirteen. And with DRS committed to professional actors, we actually funded his equity artist contract. So it's going to be exciting to welcome James back on October fourth. The celebration in October, our birthday month, continues with a performance of our newly partnership with SF Jazz. We are so excited to have SF Jazz at the Leshur Center as part of our Headliner Series. We have two weekend festivals planned. They're brand new, the Improv Festival and the Wally Festival. This is all still in October. The culmination of the twentieth anniversary year of the Leshur Foundation's Newsmaker Series also happens in October, and it features Laura Lenny. And DRAA is honored to be the nonprofit partner of this program, which is, which would be a very special way to put the spotlight only on the Leshur Foundation's Newsmakers twentieth anniversary but to kick off our thirty-fifth anniversary celebration. It's going to be a very busy October and a very exciting thirty-fifth anniversary year. I'm delighted to turn the program back to Emily.
Last time for musical chairs for me. So I'm going to share some exciting updates about next season, which we are thrilled to curate another season of groundbreaking exhibitions at Bedford Gallery, opening with a visual art fan favorite, which is will be a Still Life exhibition, followed by a solo show of Viola Frye, who's a pioneer in figurative ceramics and a Bay Area legend. Next spring, we're presenting the first retrospective of Aztec artist Inésenzio Jimenez Chino, whose Amate paintings, which are bark paintings, portray in painstaking beauty the life of people who live in the Balsas River Valley in Guerrero, Mexico. Closing out this season will be our annual curated exhibition. This time next year will be a California theme to celebrate our Golden State. I will pass it back to Carolyn to talk about Center Rep's season.
Thank you. And again, Matt, so sorry not to be able to be here tonight, but he did take a moment to film a little video for you so that you wouldn't have to only listen to my voice to talk about next season at Center Rep.
Season fifty-eight at Center Rep is all about inspiration, featuring acclaimed theatrical works that celebrate personal moments that ignite us to evolve and moves us to action, as well as what binds us to our shared sense of community. We launched this season with Paula Vogel's Tony Award-winning play with music, Indecent. The story brings to light the scandal around the god of vengeance and the nineteen twenty-one Broadway Jewish play that sparked controversy when its cast was arrested for performing it. Our production of this beautiful and thunderously relevant modern theatrical classic stands as a testament to the power of theater and the resilient immigrant artists who create it. Our production of Indecent is its tenth anniversary of its Broadway bow. To continue to follow through on our strategic plan, we are partnering with the renowned Yiddish Theater Ensemble in Berkeley to realize our goals around this production. Next up, we continue our partnership with Pemberley Productions by bringing in the critically acclaimed production of The Woman in Black. The spine-tingling ghost story was London's second hit on the West End and is just in time for spooky season. We followed The Woman in Black with a West Coast premiere of our brand-new production of A Christmas Carol by celebrated playwright Harrison David Rivers, directed by two-time Obie Award winner Jared Misachi. This production pays tribute to the Dickens classic by focusing on the themes of supporting the most vulnerable among us. We are proud to partner with Access Dance Company, one of the nation's most acclaimed ensembles of disabled, non-disabled, deaf, and neurodiverse performers. We're also thrilled to welcome back our local favorite, Michael Ray Wisely, who for years has played Scrooge in our previous production of A Christmas Carol to portray the holiday curmudgeon for the next generation. This spring, we celebrate the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Leshur with the thirty-fifth anniversary legacy revival production of Neil Simon's classic Lost in Yonkers. The story is set in revolves around two teen boys who are forced to live with their authoritarian grandmother and neurodiverse Aunt Bella. It's a heartwarming and moving play that is widely considered Neil Simon's masterpiece, having won the Pulitzer Prize for Drama. And then we cap our season with the regional premiere of the powerful Tony Award-winning musical Jagged Little Pill. Inspired by one of the bestselling albums of all time, this electrifying new musical charts the lives of Mary Jane Healy and the fracturing of her picture-perfect American family, forcing each of them to redefine the place they once called home. Raw, personal, and bursting with some of the most explosive songs in pop music history, this powerful new musical from Oscar-winning writer Diablo Cody and Grammy Award-winning songwriter Alanis Morissette and Glenn Ballard will have you while in purpose of family. And that's a sneak days are filled with fiery, passionate characters who are determined to find human connection and who, in their search, discover the power of compassion, empathy, and healing in times of shifting cultural change. On behalf of all of us at Center Rep, we are grateful for your support and belief in our work. We look forward to launching this dynamic season for the city of Walnut Creek and beyond. Take good care.
So the part you missed on Jagged Little Pill is you will be rocking in your seats. So as we look ahead, in addition to these exciting season highlights that we've shared tonight, we will be continuing to expand our education and outreach programs and deepening our partnership with our own Center for Community Arts. We'll also be investing in some major facility projects. Thirty-five years is an exciting milestone, but in a facility that large, it's also the time for some some big changes. That will include this summer, replacement of the stage floors for the Leshur Theater and the Hoffman Theater, and then future projects that are funded in the capital budget that include replacing the fire system devices, replacing the theater sound system in the Hoffman Theater, and a bunch of other fun HVAC-related things that, you know, you'll all notice when you're nice and comfy, when you're in your seats. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions before a remark. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions before remarks from our partners.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to my fellow council members here and back in Washington DC. Anybody? Kevin, you okay? All right. Thank you guys.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah. I think that sums it up for all of us. I was curious, so it sounds like we are at a point where we can say COVID is in the rear view mirror.
Well, I would say from an audience standpoint, we're generally seeing that we're close to pre-pandemic levels. It varies per producer, so not every producer is back to where they were, but overall, we're seeing that steady increasing trend. From a kind of production management side of things, there still are hiccups when we have COVID-positive cases in Center Rep productions. And so we did see with our last production, The Roommate, that we had two nights that had to be canceled as a result of actor illness. So it's, it's still impacting us, but nowhere near the extreme that we felt.
Yeah, nowhere, like half the cast is down.
Right.
Thank you guys for all your work. And I'm looking forward to hearing from.
Yes, like to welcome up Steve Lesser.
All right, well, I'm excited all over again, hearing that. Steve Lesser, Chair of the Board of the Lesser Foundation, and I'm really excited to be with you tonight to support the strategic plan. And not only that, but to applaud your support for the plan and your investment in the arts. I think it's also important to mark this time as a critical one and underscore the role that we have as partners, supporters, caretakers, elected officials. Decades ago, a visionary city council and group of business and civic leaders held the collective aspiration that this city would be the cultural and economic center of the region, and it's certainly become that. On the artistic side of that ledger was the Lesser Center for the Arts, and since its construction, the center's success has really hinged on two things in my mind. One is bringing professional-grade productions to the region of the type you've heard, and two, regional audience development. We have our core professional companies like Center Rep, the California Symphony, the City Ballet, and then the high-graded programming, which has been brought in by the DRAA Headliner Series, the Lesser Speaker Series that I produce, and now SF Jazz, which I think is the most exciting thing to happen to the center since Newsmakers. I really do believe we have offerings that rival anything else in Northern California at this point, which I think is exciting and, and to your credit. It's important to know that none of this is happening by accident. These things are all working in tandem to make the center what it is. It isn't about one group, one person, one show, or one company. It's about the integrated whole of programming, and that's what you're getting with the strategic plan. And of course, there are always going to be great community groups who have access to the center for local productions, graduations, symposiums, but the heart of the center's program is always going to be those professional productions. DRAA, as you've seen, and for those of you who've been supporters for a long time, has evolved into an outstanding production organization. The Speaker Series brings globally relevant programming. Center Rep has gained national recognition for premiering new works, and the Bedford Gallery continues its tradition of world-class exhibits. These are truly the best of times for the arts and culture in our community, and this was the vision chartered by people like Angie Coffey, Bill Armstrong, Gail Murray, Ken and Jean Hoffman, Peter and Kit Bedford, and of course, Dean and Margaret Lesser. I know, and I think it's important for us to all acknowledge that there's been a lot of change at the center, and change is hard, but the seeds we sow for progress take time to germinate. As you continue to support the arts and culture in the community, I encourage you to follow the example of your predecessors and resist the temptation of trying to influence the content, casting, or programming. As it has been throughout the center's history, it is the patrons who will decide what succeeds, who succeeds, and what fails. You as council members and we as donors and supporters shouldn't condition our support according to our own tastes or preferences. And I just want to note that I personally am terrible at this because I said, and some of the people in this room know this, that I thought Hamilton would flop. I mean, a rap musical with the founding fathers, I thought, you gotta be kidding me. But that shows you what I know and why none of you should ever ask my opinion about the art that happens at the center, save for the Speaker Series, maybe. But as it has been throughout the center, center's history, it's really going to be the patrons that decide. And on a more serious note, one need only look at what's happening at the Kennedy Center here in Washington, or there in Washington DC where Council Member Wilk is right now, to see that, you know, political interventions in the arts, even if they're well-intended, have really disastrous consequences. Once you open that door, you can never close it, and I really appreciate that the council has always steered away from that, and I want you to know that that's, the donor community, we have that same posture. The strategic plan is premised on this important principle of artistic freedom, for without that freedom, the center will cease to be what it is, which is a special place where magic happens and a powerful force for good in the community. In that same vein, I know it sounds good to say that producers and directors at the Lesser Center should place a premium on using local talent for professional productions. It's critical to remember, however, that that's not the purpose of the center. We are about audience development and enriching the community. We want the best at the center, no matter where they come from, and many do come from the East Bay community. The Bay Area has a rich tradition, of course, of public-private partnerships in supporting the arts. You might consider a place like the Davies Symphony Hall in that quaint town across the bay to be something of a cousin of ours, or else I consider that, whether I'm naive, I, I'll, I'll let you judge that, but I consider them to be a cousin of ours, and like the Lesser Center, it took a big public investment coupled with private dollars to build Davies. It's hard to imagine the San Francisco Symphony without Michael Tilson Thomas, though, and due to unfortunate illness, we are faced with that possibility. But imagine if they didn't bring him in because he wasn't local. Or imagine if they said to him, you can only use local musicians, people from all over the world perform at the symphony, and it's a fantastic and world-class product because of it. I think that's because of some visionary folks who let the artists do their work. I don't think we should be limited in our thinking by what's local, but we should be limit less in our thinking about everything that's possible. And that's really what the foundation of the Speaker Series has always been, or excuse me, the Speaker Series and everything that happens at the Lesser Center. I also would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to express my full support for Carolyn Jackson and everybody that's at the center doing such a great job. The partnership between the Lesser Foundation and the center has never been stronger, and I know that's true of DRAA as well. So in closing, I just want to note that it's our collective responsibility to keep our city as the cultural epicenter of the East Bay. It's also important to mark this moment because what you are doing in supporting the arts is truly extraordinary, especially in the times that we're in. More than anything, the strategic plan is our opportunity to say thank you to you and to ask you to stay on the journey with us. Let's continue to provide premier programming and place our trust in the artists, curators, and producers, and I promise you will not be disappointed. Thanks for letting me address you this evening.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce the first-ever Chair of the DRAA Board, I believe, and the current Chair of the DRAA Board. How is that for continuity? And someone who, without, without whom the center would not have been built, the great Angie Coffey.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for eloquent remarks. I was on the Board of Directors of the Regional Center for the Arts when we raised the money to build this magnificent theater. And the commitment we made to our donors was, we're going to bring beautiful, classic, genuinely talented arts programming to this beautiful new center that we're building. That's a promise we made to the donors, and we are continuing to honor that promise. So thank you for that. I remember in the old nut house, sitting and looking at a program, because you know, I've been going to the theater for 40 years in Walnut Creek, and seeing an asterisk by someone's name, which meant an equity actor. How did we do that? It was so exciting to have one or two names with the asterisk. Now we see beautiful programming with wonderful, talented equity actors. It's a coup to have equity actors in Walnut Creek, and I applaud you for continuing with that. So I want to just reiterate what Peggy said, and that is, we're going to be celebrating our 35th anniversary. We hope that you will come celebrate the wonderful night of magic and entertainment with us, all of you. It promises to be a beautiful event. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have my tickets, and my husband is trying to figure out how he's going to fit into his suit for that event. We do have a couple people in the audience. I would ordinarily ask him to wait for public comment, but why don't you, I have you come up and, and give your public comment now on this issue. If there's anybody else in the audience that has a strong opinion on Lesser and everything that's happening, welcome you too. So we'll go ahead and start to say your name and your city.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Darling and, and Council. It is indeed my first time in front of the Council, so thank you for reading out the rules of engagement. My name is Sandeep Kajalgi. I am a proud member of the Board of Directors of the DRAA and a resident of Walnut Creek. In 2015, my wife, Rini and I, and along with our then-three-year-old twins, moved from Massachusetts to Walnut Creek. One of the main reasons for us to choose Walnut Creek among all, over all these neighboring towns and cities was the Lesser Center for the Arts. Our real estate agent was right there, across from the center, and she would drive us to Muraga and Lafayette and Alamo and Danville, and we were always like, but what's this? Right here. And we ended up in Walnut Creek. Today, I'm here to show my support for the Lesser Center for the Arts, the Strategic Plan, and, and also talk about a couple of things that really get me excited. First, we love jazz. That's what's always playing in my car, that's what's playing at home, over all the complaints of my kids, who are now 13, in middle school, they don't like it, they say, call it elevator music, but that's me. And we, we used to go a lot to San Francisco to visit SF Jazz and watch these amazing performances. So I cannot tell you how pleased I am, how excited I am, that this programming is coming here to Walnut Creek, the Lesser Center and SF Jazz. Amazing. Did I say I'm excited? Yes, okay, all right. But second, the DRAA and the Lesser Center for the Arts are thrilled to announce Walnut Creek's first-ever Diwali Festival. It's going to happen in October, a very busy October. It's going to be the 17th and 18th of October, and it will be a mix of very traditional Diwali customs, along with modern South Asian expression, culture, and, and the next generation. And when I say it's going to be exciting, it is going to be exciting. It's going to be live music, it's going to be dance, it's going to be food, it's going to be fashion, it's going to be crafts, arts, handicraft, it's going to be a party, right? It's a joyous holiday celebrated all over South Asia by more than a billion people, and this is the first time we're going to do it in Walnut Creek, right? It's the victory of light over darkness, it's the victory of good over evil. So I'm honored to be leading this effort, and trust me when I say, we're going to light up the lesser. There's a lot of work to be done, we are deep in it right now, so stay tuned, everyone, but we're going to need everybody's support, especially the council, we're going to need everybody's support, especially everybody in the city and the community. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much for your time, for your leadership, for your support.
Good evening, Mayor Darling and Council members. I'm Mike Weintraub, and I live in Alamo, but my office has been in Walnut Creek since 1981, so I feel like a resident. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of DRAA. Tonight, I'm here not only to express my full support for the Lesser Center's strategic plan, but I'm also here to share some truly exciting news about how that plan is coming to life. One of its most visionary goals was to launch the Lesser Center in Your Neighborhood Program, bringing world-class artists out into the community to engage individuals who, for reasons of financial hardship, physical limitations, or mental health challenges, may not otherwise experience live performances. That mission spoke deeply to my wife Paula and me. We believe that access to the arts is not a luxury, it's a human need. So to help launch this program, last year, we awarded a $100,000 Challenge Grant to DRAA, and we were thrilled to see that our gift helped additional support from individuals and local businesses who also believe in this cause. As season ticket holders to Newsmakers, Center Rep, Headliners, and many of the wonderful Broadway musicals that we've had over the years, we've experienced firsthand the joy, connection, and meaning that the Lesser Center brings. And through DRAA's Arts Access Program, we've seen the faces of those whose lives are changed simply by being given a seat to be in the audience. We are incredibly fortunate to have the Lesser Center for the Arts in Walnut Creek. It is the cultural jewel of Contra Costa County, and I want to thank the City Council for your continued leadership and unwavering commitment to the arts. Together, we're building something truly special, and even though it's been three and a half decades since the Lesser Center opened its doors, we're just getting started. So thank you.
Thank you. So are there anything, this is just a presentation to update us, Councilmember Silva, would you like to, you're reaching for the button.
Well, first, I want to thank all of you who are here tonight for the work that you do every day to make the Lesser Center and the arts a vibrant part of our community. But I think if you were, had the opportunity to travel the way my husband and I have, we have discovered something that you probably don't know. We are internationally renowned because of the Lesser Center for the Arts, and I can't thank the Lesser family enough for being part of that vision. I was on a tour bus in Charleston, South Carolina about 10 years ago with my daughter, and the tour bus driver, it was one of those hop-on, 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 hop-off buses, and the bus driver, good old boy from Charleston, he said, he wanted to know where everybody was from, and when my daughter and I said we were from Walnut Creek, California, he said, "Don't you have a performing arts center there?" I thought my daughter was going to die because she, you know, thought this is Podunksville. But we were in, having dinner recently in Barcelona at the original Teleferic with friends who live in Barcelona now and have lived there for almost 20 years. Peggy, they watch Sarah Mackenzie on her YouTube videos, and they talk about the Lesser Center. And then we were on a cruise in the Mediterranean outside of Sicily, and the people sitting across from us on the tender to get ashore, well, they're, first of all, they're from Walnut Creek, and they live at the Mercer, and the friends they were traveling with are so excited that they now live at the Mercer that their friends do because they can go to the Lesser Center, and they made a point of talking about it. And all of this is happening outside of Califor, outside of the Bay Area, outside of California, outside of the United States. So thank you for putting us on the map, and you're doing a fabulous job, and I'm so excited, I'm looking forward to the next 35 years, I think. We'll make it 25.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, anything to add?
Just that I appreciate everything that we heard. The Lesser Center absolutely is a jewel of the city, and of course, I have heard that and been involved, hearing about the marketing and working on that since I was on the Arts Commission, oh my gosh, 25 years ago. So it's great to see, you know, us continuing to have such an attraction in Walnut Creek, especially in light of the challenges that other local theater companies have had around us. Somebody was just asking me in Washington, the former mayor of Danville was asking, you don't do the Shelley Awards anymore? And I had to say, it's because all of these other local theater companies have folded. We would love to have the Shelley Awards. We need to have these local theater companies become reinvigorated and, and to become part of the acting community again. And so I understand very well how important this all is and look forward to continued success.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffinny?
I'd say we're, we're very lucky to have this tremendous resource in Walnut Creek, and I'm, I'm really excited about what's to come.
Yeah, and I'm really excited about it, too, and I'm going to give up my statement because Bob Lynchite said he wanted to have just a little something to say, because Bob was looking for the last word. was looking for the last word.
Thank you, Mayor Darling, members of the council. Bob Lynchite, representing the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. I felt compelled to speak on behalf of business for a minute. Peggy and I have long shared the slogan that "The arts is commerce," and in representing the Chamber and Visitors Bureau, we took a risk to move a legendary conference that we held in the East Bay to Walnut Creek, and even though it's not technically an arts program, it is a venue that deserves some consideration when you're putting on conferences. And I have to say that this last year, we had 700 attendees, we actually had Sandra Joseph, Phantom and the Opera, sing and perform at the event, it was fabulous. We are measuring the success of some of our events in Walnut Creek, and I dare say that in addition to the arts, the Leisure Center is a terrific venue for conferences, and we're going to prove that this next year as we've identified several that we're trying to bring to Walnut Creek. So, I thought it'd add some additional perspective and support of the Leisure Center for the Arts, DRAA, and all that make that wonderful venue happen, and I can second Councilmember Silva's remarks about how it's known nationally, because I, too, attend national and international conferences, and we are well-known and respected throughout the world. So, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we'll just give our whole Leisure team a big round of applause because you guys are hanging in there. And now, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'll let the record show that Councilmember Silva has joined the meeting.
I've already been here.
Or Councilmember Francois. Somebody's showing up, you know. Anyway, on the Consent Calendar, does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion, or any staff need to pull anything for correction?
I'd like to pull item 2E, please.
Okay, any other items? All right, if there's anybody that would like to provide public comments on Consent Calendar items 2, A, B, C, D, or F, if they could step forward now? Seeing no one, is there a motion on those measure, or those?
Move to approve Consent Calendar items 2A through D and F.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember DeViney?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk?
Aye.
Aye.
Oops. And Mayor Darling?
Sorry, aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, item 2E, Councilmember Silva?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Item 2E is the authorization of the city awarding about $2 million in grant funds to two affordable housing developers for projects that they have been working on. We heard this presentation about this, and it is coming forward through the Housing and Community Development Committee of the City Council, but I was hoping our Community Development Director or representatives at the Housing Department, ah, I couldn't see you through Erica and Rich, could give us an update on what we're doing and how it's different than the way we used to allocate funds for affordable housing projects.
Of course, I'd be happy to give a quick overview of this agenda item. Jennifer Yamas, I'm a housing analyst in the Community Development Department. So, the city has historically provided opportunities to affordable housing developers to request funding to increase and preserve affordable housing, to equitably support access to the funding that's available. In November of 2023, City Council authorized a new process for soliciting proposals. So, the process changed from collecting applications on a rolling basis to having one annual RFP that has very defined evaluation criteria. About a year later, in November 2024, the city issued the first-ever RFP. We received three proposals in response to the RFP, and tonight, staff is recommending funding two of the three proposals. The first would be $1 million to Habitat for Humanity for Esperanza Place Phase 2, which is an ownership project that will bring 19 low- and moderate-income homes to Walnut Creek. The second is a $1 million conditional award to RCD for Civic Crossing, which is formerly known as 699YVR, which is a rental project that would bring 93 affordable units to the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, I will ask you a couple of questions.
Of course.
So, we previously did this on a rolling basis, which meant almost a little bit of first-come, first-served if we had the funds available. I remember we started awarding funds somewhere in the early 2000s because we set up the program, and what is the source of funds for that program?
The source of funds, there's two funds that it comes from. It comes from the affordable housing in Luffy, and it comes from the commercial linkage fee, which are funds 173 and 175.
So, the affordable housing in Luffy is basically when housing projects are being proposed by developers, they, as part of the entitlement process, they are required to pay a fee to basically contribute toward these funds, which then help to fund these affordable projects.
That's correct.
And then the commercial linkage fee is a, would you like to explain that?
Sure. The commercial linkage fee is a fee that is for commercial development. With commercial development, housing is, they bring employees, and housing is usually in demand, and so, we charge a fee for the development of commercial space, and it's $5 per square foot.
And do you happen to know off the top of your head, or perhaps one of your colleagues would, how much we've awarded since the inception of this program?
I would say we've awarded a lot of millions of dollars.
I think it's at least 30 million.
Yes.
The number keeps getting bigger.
Yes, yes.
And it keeps getting more and more expensive to develop these projects.
Yes.
A technical question on recently reading about the May revision of the governor's budget, there was a disappointing not re-up of the housing, affordable housing, one of the funding sources that we have been relying on from the state. Is this going to affect either of these projects?
So, that's correct. The current draft of the state budget has made substantial cuts to affordable housing, but it is a draft, so it's still under negotiation and discussion. RCD will not be impacted because they have already secured the state funding through the No Place Like Home and the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant. Habitat for Humanity does have an application out there for Cal Home, and so, they will continue to lobby to reinstate the funds to the state budget.
And RCD is the developer for the Civic Crossing?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you very much. I don't know if others have.
Any other questions? Councilmember Francois?
Just, thanks, Jennifer. Can you remind us how much generally, annually, a year, we get in affordable housing fees?
Sure. So, for the last three years, the city has received about $500,000 in affordable housing fees.
So, about a half-million a year?
Yes.
And that's the average?
Yes.
And then after we award these two $1 million grants, what will be the remaining balance in our affordable housing fund?
It will be about $2 million.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Any public comment on item 2E on the Consent Calendar? Seeing no one, I will bring it back here for a motion?
Sure, I could make one. First of all, thank you to the housing and the community development staff. We will be meeting next week, by the way, on the Community Development Block grant funding, yay, it came through. I am pleased to be able to make the motion to authorize the award of $1 million to Habitat for Humanity for Esperanza Place Phase 2, and conditionally award $1 million to Resources for Community Development for the Civic Crossing Project.
Second.
Call, roll, please.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember DeViney?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk?
Aye.
And Mayor Silva?
Aye.
Or Mayor Darling.
Okay, we're going to have to put our name tags bigger on it.
Hi.
Anyway, thank you very much, and thank you, and good luck to both projects, they're both very exciting projects, and we're happy to have them in our community. Next on the agenda is Public Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. We can request clarification or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, we will have 30 minutes right now, and if we need more, we'll have some more at the end of the meeting. If anybody is here for public comment, you could step up to the podium. And seeing no one, no one, we're going to move on. That'll be the end of public comment. So, next on the agenda is Councilmember and Staff Announcements, Reports on Activities. City Attorney, is there any closed-session items to report out?
There are no closed-session items to report on this evening.
All right, City Manager, any reports?
Good evening, Dan Buckshai, City Manager. Two updates this evening. Councilmember Silva foreshadowed the first one related to the release of the Governor's May Revis, as it's known, which was released last week relative to the state budget. Just to give a quick overview of the state budget, there's literally hundreds of pages of analysis that one could read if interested. Give you a sense of scale, the overall state budget is about $322 billion. The general fund is about $225 billion of that, and the state is facing about a $12 billion gap for the general fund, so about a 5% gap, just to put it into perspective. They're looking to close that with $5 billion roughly of ongoing expenditure reductions in $7 billion of one-time or short-term types of budget balancing solutions, including transfers and deferrals of various types of programs. So, with that, obviously, they are having to make some difficult decisions. One of the areas that is a big focal point that the state is investing in is fire prevention and control, shifting some funding from cap and trade and otherwise to the general fund to help with that, as well as from other bond funding to help. As noted, there is no new funding for homelessness or for affordable housing. I believe the prior grants that were allocated are continuing, I don't think they're being cut. Some of them are not continuing, and many of them are one-time in nature, and they're not being allocated for one time in the future. One thing that is a bit concerning, on the public safety front, Proposition 36 was passed by the voters this fall. There appears to be little to no funding in the state budget for implementation of Prop 36, so it appears it'll be left to counties and cities to effectively tackle that. The governor suggested or hinted that may pursue a housing and infrastructure bond for 2026, not really sure of all the details at this point in time. And then something that's worth noting, there's obviously a lot of discussion in Washington, DC at this very point in time about the federal budget, with the House moving forward a bill that has substantial changes in tax, as well as cuts to some entitlement programs which would trickle down to the state and to counties. This budget proposal that came out from the governor last week does not take any of those program reductions into consideration. So, if that occurs, it's anticipated the state would need to convene a special session potentially to address those. And then always to keep in mind, it's amazing how incentives tend to work. The state legislature has to pass a budget by June 15th, or they don't get paid, and since that bill went into place, every budget has been passed on time. So, I suspect this one will be also. The other update that I had this evening, I did want to highlight, those of us in cities tend to focus on what we have going on in the city, but Contra Costa County did issue their annual report for 2024, just came out, just came across my desk yesterday, thought I would share it. For those that are interested, it hits on some of the key programs and outcomes that the County Board of Supervisors and collectively the nearly 12,000 employees of Contra Costa County delivered last year, and if you'd like to find out more, you can go to contracosta.ca.gov. And that's it for me this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now, turning to my fellow councilmembers, Councilmember DeViney?
Yes, good evening. I don't have a lot from this last cycle. I did get a chance to meet with the arts community, and we just saw that fantastic presentation. Let me see. I was present for the, I know it's not really a city activity, but I thought it was, it's a leisure activity, they had the Fire Academy graduation this last, just yesterday, I think, or the day before, and it was very moving to see all these young firefighters finish up their training and launch their career, and I was privileged to be there.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva, were you on vacation the whole time?
Well, I was, but I have a few things.
Okay, you can, you can have a few things.
First of all, I will mention that the Association of Bay Area Governments, which I am on the Executive Committee of, they had a couple of meetings while I was away, and I was getting rapid-fire text messages, and thank you to Erica Vandenbrand, our Community Development Director, for attending the meeting and making comments, okay, what's on the agenda. In the last 18 months, Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments adopted what's called a Transit-Oriented Community Strategy, and this basically, in a nutshell, says they want people to be, they want us to focus our housing near transit so that we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we can make it easier for people to drive less, and in addition, allow for more housing. Hand-in-hand with that, they basically have made a commitment to tie the awarding of transportation dollars that they get, MTC gets, from the federal government and from the state government, to award, to tie the granting of those funding, those monies, which we, there's $25 to $30 million at stake here for the city of Walnut Creek, to tie the award of that money to our ability to adopt and follow the Transit-Oriented Community Strategy. Now, what we will say to ourselves is, we have a lot of transit-oriented development, that's where we're focused, and so, we'll score well. The challenge is what the scorecard says and what the criteria are, because it's not just about density, it's also about the three Ps, production, preservation, and protection. And it's policies, there are about a dozen policies, and they have to decide. The regional agencies have, are in the process of gathering feedback on their proposed scoring, And it doesn't look pretty, and we're going to have to pay attention, because it will be, if we get zeros, or we, let's say we just score average, we're either going to have to take money that we're investing in other places and invest it in those three Ps of the policies, or we're going to be losing dollars in the transportation infrastructure, and that's dollars that have already been pre-planned to be used for Regnesho Valley Road, et cetera. So, this is going to be serious, looking at this. We will be continuing to talk about it at the Mayor's Conference and regional entities, but we have to pay attention, and I'm, because the first blush was not so good, that's why they were texting me in Rome. Well, they didn't know I was in Rome, they thought I was going to the meeting, but, so that's one item. I did have a chance to be in Italy for a little bit of time, and spring has sprung in Italy from small towns to Rome, and outdoor dining, which I know you all talked about as part of the operating budget, which I did enjoy watching, the discussion, 4:00 AM on a cruise ship, watching the sun rise over the back of a boat, but it was interesting. And I noticed the discussion, and there are some ideas that I've come back with, with samples of how they're doing it in these small towns, but they're also doing it in Rome as well, where they're doing outdoor dining on what is probably a more seasonal basis, with what are easy to pop up, but stable, and they will work in the public roadways, and may be a way to do outdoor dining more seasonal at a lower cost, maybe. I have photos. My husband thought I was taking photos of other things, I was taking photos of structures. And finally, I will mention Recycle Smart at their recent meeting, had a presentation from the two proposers who are competing for the collection contract, that will be the company that for the next 10 years plus will be running the trucks that collect our garbage, our organics, and our blue bin recyclables. And the presentations were very good, and I think Matt may have- And the presentations were very good, and I think Matt may have more to report on that, but I think we'll be making a decision by mid-July. Okay. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Francois?
So I had, thank you, Mayor. I had relative light duty for the last two weeks, brief report, along with Councilmember DeVini. I did meet with the DRAA representatives, heard about the leisure specific plan, strategic plan. Sorry to miss a presentation tonight, but I did get a preview through those meetings, and have other city meetings this week, but I'll report on those at our June meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Right, well, as the Representative for County Connection, a couple of updates on this. One is that the electric bus issue, which we've heard about for the last several months now, we do have Route 4 running with its electric buses. We got the charging to work all right on that. We're, we are prepared if there's anything that goes down again. The problem is that the subcontractor has gone out of business, and we're essentially trying to use people that are familiar with the infrastructure of the charging system to be able to help us to fix it. The Route 5 bus, which that is, has been running on the regular diesel buses, is due to a power board issue. We're hoping to resolve that within a few weeks. So, some good news, hopefully some more to come. I did want to mention that County Connection's been working in partnership with the Contra Costa Transit Authority, with the cities of Concord and Walnut Creek, and, and MTC on various projects to deploy a centralized conditional transit signal priority system. So what is that? Well, TSP is, the system will provide real-time changes to traffic signal timing in response to automated requests from buses by either extending a green phase or shortening a red phase at an intersection to allow buses to travel faster than passenger cars. So the aim is to enhance mobility and sustainability and safety across all transportation modes. And the program's core goals include improving travel time and reliability for vehicles in transit, enhancing safety, reducing emissions, and increasing proficiency and advanced arterial operations. So think about Ignacio Valley Road, Treat Boulevard, and through this initiative, Concord and Walnut Creek were each awarded nearly $800,000 to implement the Transit TSP systems along these designated corridors. So the pilot program is going to be on Walnut Creek Routes 4 and 5, that's downtown and through to Shadlands, and they've been installed on 66 signalized intersections. And we're hoping that this will, the pilot program will be successful, and it'll be rolled out to an additional 28 buses, bringing the total to 59, and then across the entire County Connection system at some point. Speaking of County Connection, the reason that I'm remote today and in Washington, DC, is that I'm leading the County Connection delegation as board chair to the American Public Transit Authority Legislative Conference here. We're advocating for additional grant funding for public transit, or should I say, keeping what we have, as we've heard from our city manager and Councilmember Silva, there are some challenges right now, and there are going to be cuts in substantial areas. We're trying to ensure that the congressional and the senate delegations understand how important this is, that we continue to fund public transit, because even if there are people that are not using it, or if the majority in the House and Senate constituents feel that they're not using it, we all know that without public transit, we're just going to add two or three times the amount of cars on the roads. And think about what happens when BART has problems. So this is a huge issue, and so we're also trying to hopefully hold the line when it comes to zero emission bus technology that we've already started adopting and now have to try to work our way through over the next few years. So that's why we're here. I also want to mention a couple of other things. I was at the Walnut Creek Locust Street Festival last week, rousing success, great attendance. It's, it's the largest festival that I've seen us have on what was previously called First Wednesdays. There'll be several more this summer, with the next one on June 11th, so I look forward to going to that. And then lastly, sort of dovetailing on to what Councilmember DeVini had mentioned, I attended the Contra Costa, Contra Costa Fire Department Girls Empowerment Camp opening this last weekend, and this was the idea of CCFD getting all of these girls that have been interested, schoolgirls that are interested in fire and firefighting and maybe having that as a career, having them spend a whole weekend on doing a lot of the activities that firefighters do, and ideally, teeing them up for a career in firefighting. So while that's the beginning of it, it's great to hear that Councilmember DeVini saw the end of it with graduations. And that's my report.
Thank you. All right. And for me, you know, we had the Walnut Creek Chamber Board Meeting, Dan, or Dan gave the city report, Bob is relentlessly pursuing his strategic plan, lots of good coordination going on there. A couple of things to highlight, Art and Wine Festival is coming to Civic Park, the 31st and 1st. Many of you have already signed up to volunteer, they're still looking for a couple volunteers on the 1st, the afternoon of the 1st. We had a good discussion on the presentation at Civic Affairs on taxes and tariffs, and one of the things that struck me was a number of the nonprofits in the room talked about the different ways that the federal changes are influencing their operations, and things as varied as contracts with farmers being canceled so that food stuffs aren't showing up, regular surplus food that is normally provided from Department of Agriculture not being distributed from warehouses, tariffs causing increases in costs. And then after the food insecurity people were done creating anxiety, the folks in the medical profession started talking about the implications with the kinds of cuts that are being talked about in Medicaid, and how that would infect, or impact the infrastructure here and in rural areas of the state, where all of a sudden, people that had healthcare coverage are no longer covered and are seeking healthcare in the emergency room, which affects us all. So that was a little sobering. After that, I went to the MCE meeting. We did a lot of discussion about our various programs to provide sustainable resources around the service area. One of the things that is new this year, there, they had not thought this federal money was still going to come through, but it looks like it is coming through. They're trying to set up at least one battery facility in each one of the counties that they provide power to, and they're looking to set these up at civic facilities. So I will get more information, share that with Rich Payne, because it's an opportunity for us to get some battery back up for the new community center and swimming pool. So we'll be looking into that. The cancer support community had their Hope Walk, which is why I sent, why Kevin got to go to the, the Fire Academy, and that was a, this is really uplifting. I love the support and the love and the air that they have for people that are going through cancer, and their motto is, nobody goes through this alone, and it's just really wonderful. Primrose Preschool had their groundbreaking, or their ribbon cutting out at the orchards. It's a new daycare, and it includes a couple much, much-needed infant rooms. Infant daycare is tremendously expensive, tremendously short supply, and so it was good to see that. Coming up, in addition to Art and Wine on the 31st, this Friday is the fundraiser for Trinity Center at Lafayette Park Hotel, and that will be a fun event. And then this morning, as Jan Warren and I talked about earlier, EBHO used the experience that we all had in bringing the Hope Village up out of the ground as a learning opportunity for other faith-based communities. And there are a number of them around Contra Costa County that were there, who are actively pursuing it. In addition to the success at Grace Presbyterian with Hope Village, the Hope Solutions is working on one with the city of Pittsburgh called Village of Hope at the Church of the Nazarene. And so Dion Adams and I, Dion is the Mayor Protam, and Pittsburgh and I, we both talked about what it takes to bring these things out of the ground, and we talked about getting along and building connections and that. And that's my report. And now we will, oh, no, if you want to go to the bathroom, you have to stop. Yeah, you may add one more thing.
You brought up the taxing of our, our healthcare system when, when cuts are made to low-income families receiving healthcare. I just wanted to add another layer on to that, so, you know, we can, we can follow the train of thought that if, if you cut the, the healthcare to poorer families, they wind up having to seek healthcare through the emergency room, which creates long wait times and clogs up the emergency room. But what it also does is every ambulance in the county that's dropping off patients, that ambulance can't leave the ER until they've turned over patient care to the, the hospital, to the nursing staff there. And sometimes ambulances are, you know, waiting an hour just to drop off a patient. So those are, those are also, it's also a tax to the EMS system that is then taken out of commission and sitting in the, you know, sitting in the lobby with lines up around the corner, trying to drop off their patients. So it affects the community in so many ways that, that we don't always appreciate, and so it's very, very concerning to hear about these potential cuts.
I, I think the bottom line is that the support network is varied, and it's integrated together, and it, we are all watching with a certain amount of horror, worrying about what's going to happen as people pull, it's like a big Jenga tower, let's pull this out, let's pull that out. Lots of unintended consequences.
Well, I appreciate also what you just said, as a physician and a healthcare provider. I've always heard that it is cheaper to prevent something than to treat it, and it's certainly cheaper to prevent something and not have to treat it in the emergency crisis. That's the most expensive form of healthcare, is it not?
By far. I mean, it's, it's like five or 10x.
It's not to say you're expensive, but it's an environment that is expensive.
It's the hospital system. It's using the hospital and all of the resources that the hospital has.
Well, and by the time you get to the point where you have to go to an emergency room, you're really sick.
Potentially, or you just don't have health coverage and you need a med refill.
Yeah. It's a, anyway.
I was going to change the subject.
Okay.
It's an important subject, but, yeah.
Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break and come back, and then we'll hear about our strategic plan? Thank you all. All right, and we are back. Two quick things we forgot in the update. Councilmember Francois reminded me that the new fair guard gates are going in at the BART station. And staff reminded me, we have a Memorial Day event that is not to be missed, 11:00 at Civic Park. And I will be speaking, so I better make sure that people show up. Next on the agenda is the Council Calendar 25, 26 Priority Scope of Work, and I invite the staff to come forward and start the presentation.
Before they start, can you tell us what time it is in Civic Park on Monday?
11:00 AM.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, council members. My name is Joe Carosa, and I'm an analyst with the City Manager's Office, and I'll be introducing tonight's council priorities topic. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening the recommended scopes of work for the city council priorities. And as you know, it is city council's practice to establish priorities every two years to guide the city's work for the upcoming two calendar years. In this case, we're talking about 2025 and 2026. So tonight's presentation kicks off that process. This is initial update about the scope and objectives of these five city council priorities, and we intend to provide quarterly updates going forward. So our next update will include more timelines as well as further work planning and progress So in February of this year, council identified five priorities for calendar years 2025 and 2026, and they're listed here in alphabetical order. And I'm not going to be covering this presentation by myself. I'm joined by the lead staff for each of these five priorities. So we've got Mike Nieman, who will be covering economic development and downtown vitality. We've got Candace Rink and Mumbi, who will discuss environmental sustainability and climate action. We've got Erica Van de Brand for general plan update, Rich Payne for park and recreation facilities. And then our chief of police, Jamie Knox, will cover our last item, which is public safety and social wellness. So each of our leads will walk through staff's proposed scopes of work and work, and talk about it at a high summary level. And we will invite your feedback, questions, and input at the end of the presentation. And as you know, significant progress has already been made on several of these priorities. However, there is a lot of work that remains in the months and years ahead. And in particular, the general plan update, the new item, will extend well beyond this two-year cycle. So to bring these priorities to life, staff translated each priority into multiple strategic objectives. And strategic objectives meaning broad focuses or focus areas describing what we aim to accomplish in the next two years. And then each objective is then further broken down into actions, which are the specific steps we'll take to meet each of these goals or priorities. And you'll see this structure reflected in tonight's presentation as well as the attachment to the report. So following your input, staff will begin implementing these particular actions and return again quarterly with updates. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it to our first presenter, Mike, on economic development.
Thank you, Joe, and good evening, council. Mike Nieman, your Economic Development Manager. So the first priority is economic development. As you can see here, the thinking behind this is to proceed with where we are headed and build on some of the strengths that we already have here. We're fortunate, we have a really strong economy in Walnut Creek. We have a really diversified economy. We have more employees than residents, and we have well-established business clusters. So the thinking is that we need to retain our leading role in the region and continue developing some competitive strengths here. We already are well into the two-year action plan that I want to thank council for adopting a year and a half ago. So we'll continue with that plan through the rest of the year, and we'll be looking for a new one. The focus for these objectives is to continue investing in our downtown as ground zero for economic development, retain the quality of life that we have here, which is one of the most unique attributes of Walnut Creek, revenue generation, continued growth in jobs and employment, economic resilience, business support, tourism, and performance tracking. And you'll see that as I cover each of the objectives. There are four objectives for economic development, and the themes among them are resilience, inclusiveness, flexibility, being business-friendly, experiential side with 6 million visitors to Broadway Plaza alone, and the quality of life, whether it's measured through the arts and culture, as you have heard in the prior presentation, safety, or many other unique attributes that make Walnut Creek a unique place. So the first goal, continue building a resilient, inclusive, and diverse economy. How do we do that? One of the strategies is developing a targeted campaign to attract higher-paying jobs. There's already a lot of jobs here, and not all of them are paying high wages. Not everyone can afford to live in this community who works here. So the thinking is, how do we identify the types of jobs that we're competitive for, building on some of the existing clusters that we have, identify opportunities, and target some of these niche employment subsectors for these opportunities that are higher-paying. We will also focus on business retention programs, such as reintroducing the mayor's visits. The current businesses are a bedrock of the local economy. We have well over 3,000 businesses here, and retaining them, building relationships with them, understanding what some of the local dynamics are, which are rapidly changing, is very important. Attracting tenants to shade lands in particular. And we look to attract tenants to the city as a whole, but shade lands is a particular area of an opportunity. And teaming with the PBIT there in marketing that area, understanding that there's some capacity and opportunity for repositioning. There is some new and fresh thinking in going into how do we best leverage that as a continued area for supporting employment and growing some of the job growth within the city with infrastructure there. Creation of a wellness corridor that's been identified in the existing action plan. And the thinking there is, what is the wellness corridor? How do we build on some of the wellness trends in this community? How do we build on some of the hospitals, some of the healthcare employment, and leverage some of the existing office space to build a cluster that supports and complements the ecosystem that's already along that corridor? And lastly, supporting growth in the auto industry. We already have a thriving auto industry cluster here, and we heavily rely on them for sales tax generation, which supports services. About one-third of our sales tax comes from it. So building a relationship with the auto sellers and understanding what are some of the challenges, how can we partner, how can we continue supporting their growth is a goal of ours. The second area is continue creating a business-friendly environment. And this is all about flexibility and attracting businesses. And the key is doing it without negatively affecting the quality of life that we have. So it's really about striking the right balance with being flexible and being able to attract desirable businesses, but also retaining the rules that make Walnut Creek unique. And so we continue having the quality of life that we have here, which is our competitive advantage. Improving permitting is part of the goal here, and we're looking to do the whole process on making sure that this continues to be a positive experience for developers, businesses, applicants. Creating concierge service where we focus on businesses that are of strategic importance to our economy and making sure that we're not adversely affecting the timeline for these businesses, so they can start generating benefits as early as possible. And lastly, enhancing business outreach, meaning that we continue having a dialogue with the business community. We build relationships, and we continue to understand the things that are going well, that are not going well, how can we help, and how can we be proactive in addressing some of the things that may be challenges that are seen in the business community. The next goal is enhancing the downtown experience and tourism attraction, and that is back to the experiential factor. Downtown is a crown jewel of our strategy. It's what draws people to town. It generates a lot of sales tax for our community. We heard council direction recently on the outdoor dining program, so focusing on that, how do we continue making sure that the streets are activated, the user experience is enhanced, and people want to continue coming here and spending money in downtown Walnut Creek and creating experiences that are unique and cannot be created in other communities, especially given the increase in competition. And other communities also trying to compete in this realm with restaurants and other experiential side of retail in general. And promotion. Promotion is another key area where we partner and work closely with the Chamber and their tourism arm, Visit Walnut Creek, such as the Arts and Wine Festival that's upcoming is an example of that, that's going to bring a lot of folks to the community and hopefully generate a lot of spillover economic impact outside of Civic Park and the remainder of downtown and elsewhere in the city through hotel stays and other activities. And the last goal is promotion of the city brand as a premier destination. And Walnut Creek is a unique brand. As some of the council members talked earlier, we get recognized not nationally but internationally, and not just for the leisure center, but for some of these other competitive elements that I mentioned. It's about the quality of life, it's about the shopping, it's about the experiences that people have when they come here. And we want to remain at the forefront of that. We want to do marketing, and we want to tell the stories of what makes us unique so we can continue attracting people to this community. We want to continue tracking performance and seeing what strategies work and don't work. That requires a lot of data mining and tracking and building trends over time. So being the city's data broker is a big part of economic development. Working with the stakeholders. Economic development is a team sport, so when I talk about economic development, we are a division of two, but it's really partnerships, partnerships with downtown, with the Chamber, with the departments, and external stakeholders on the regional level is how we can get these things done. And lastly, the new action plan. So with the winding down of the current action plan in 2025, we will be looking to update and implement some of these strategies that I've highlighted in the new two-year document that will cover 2026 and 2027. And with that, I will pass it over to Candace.
I, it might be easier for us to go through and ask specific questions of each area as we go through rather than try to hold them, but, so if people have a couple of quick questions for Mike. Councilmember De Finney.
So I, you know, as, as the council, you know, one of our biggest roles is passing policy, and then so much of the groundwork is, and the ongoing work is done by staff. When I hear things like, you know, targeting higher-paying jobs, marketing, and you mentioned the mayor visits, like going out to businesses, it just made me think that as far as, you know, targeting these, these companies, targeting these higher-paying jobs, the marketing campaign, the outreach, is, do you see like a greater role for the council to be advocates in that regard? Can, do you have lots of businesses to visit? And perhaps, you know, we can spend time doing that? I'm just curious if you see a role besides policy that we might be able to engage in?
What I would just add at a higher level, and Mike can add in more detail, I mean, certainly council members and mayor are always ambassadors for the city, and part of your role is active in the community and talking with folks to understand their interests so that we can, you know, address those not only here at the dais but in operations as well. In terms of, you know, visiting businesses and whatnot, we have staff that, you know, work with WCD to visit some in the downtown areas and partnerships with the Chamber. And then there are, I think we're targeting roughly six or so a year that the mayor would do. So I don't know that we'd have capacity in that regard to organize tours with each of the council members more specifically. We're trying to have the mayor be the focal point there and then do some other work at the staff level on less formal kind of check-ins. But, you know, obviously, as you're out in the community talking with folks, helping send the message in terms of some of the policies that we're working on or bringing that information back from what you're hearing is an absolutely critical role of the council.
Other questions, Councilmember Sullivan?
Well, I was just going to add to that. We have an opportunity as council members on an ongoing basis to be able to work, address questions and work the message when we're at events such as Walnut Creek Chamber bashes, or Art and Wine Festival, et cetera. But I think it's easier if we have one voice that speaks for the, as a representative of the council as a whole each year, and that, which is why the mayor's visits were always, it just rotates. But I appreciate the, the more we know about what the answers to the questions are, the better we are as ambassadors, as council members, too.
All right. Mayor Protam, did you have any questions?
Not any questions. I, well, I guess I could phrase it into a question, which is, I know there's been some challenges when it's come to working with commercial office spaces in our area, and so I think some creative ways to be able to increase occupancy there, I think is going to be something that will help all of our vitality, and would be interested to have those ongoing discussions with staff and the community and how they would like to position it for us. That's, there's a question in there somewhere, but that was my thought.
I'll follow up, because that sparked a question in terms of, is, Mike, is that, is that particular sector what you're envisioning when you talk about strategic zoning updates? Is it focused on office, commercial, pedestrian, retail?
It is.
What are you envisioning there?
Yes, thank you for that question. It is, and what we're doing in that regard, and we have already started, is getting input from the business community. So we have engaged brokers in a conversation and getting feedback, and we're working with the planning division staff to make sure that we understand and fine-tune. So whether it's through the general plan update or other, or other ways, understanding that we don't have any zoning rules that may inadvertently prevent the types of businesses that we may want to see in certain areas. And in other cases, it's just understanding why we have those rules having the right rationale. So being flexible yet making sure that we retain the quality of life is really the key there. And so far, the kind of input that we've received are mostly focused on office and retail-type zoning.
So you get the feedback from the brokers, and then the next step is engaging with Erica and her group in terms of, here's what we're hearing, how could we implement this? here's what we're hearing, how could we implement this in terms of changes to the zoning code?
Yes, that's correct. And I'll let Erica cover it a bit more during her portion of the presentation. But that's where we currently are and it's an ongoing dialogue. So it, I really think of it as more of a framework because we want to make sure that we understand the input, that we work with planning, that we report back on some of the outcomes of those conversations. And we also brace and plan if and how we can fix to the extent that, because not every kind of feedback we've received necessarily merits fixing per se. But to the extent that there are opportunities to improve, that we look ahead and look for ways how those could be improved, which generally would probably be through the general plan update where we could look at a more strategic way of making sure that things are fine-tuned.
Thank you.
So my only question was, I was thinking about the idea, the permit streamlining and the potential for a concierge. And one of the things that I have heard from a number of different businesses that are trying to, you know, cross the i's, dot the t's, is conflicts with other agencies. And so, you know, PG&E transformers, Hope Village and their East Bay Mud asking for six meters. You know, the Primrose last, you know, they were talking about the the state licensing and having difficulty getting through that. Is there a potential for something like the concierge to also provide that service? Like, who do you yell at at PG&E kind of thing?
Yes, there's always an opportunity and thank you for your question, Mayor. But I think the Primrose example you bring up is a good one. So we knew that they had a lease signed and they're losing money because they were they were not able to get the permit from the state that would allow them to move forward. So us knowing that, we reached out to the state. We reached out through various avenues that we could find to put additional pressure on the state and try to expedite the permitting process, which ultimately we were successful in getting them permitting. So that's a really good example of what is meant by the concierge service. It's not that we can always control the outcomes of external agencies, but we can certainly prioritize and try to invest resources and hope that our efforts enhance and leverage the applicant efforts and and try to expedite those kinds of things.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions when you're done?
Yeah, I'm all done. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mike. The reference to concierge, we've talked about it a lot in recent years. And it seems very important. And then you said, where would we focus? And is it also possible that we can offer a concierge service to those new businesses, particularly downtown, that don't know what they don't know? You don't know to ask. So how do we, so is there a way for us to be able to facilitate an awareness of something, some services that they need? And as an example, I can remember standing in the Community Development Department, talking to someone 15 years ago. A new restaurant across the street, it was a different brand. It had come in and it didn't have a sign. And I said, why don't they have a sign yet? You can't get business without a sign. And the answer I got, this was ages ago, was they haven't asked for one. And to which I kind of, my head was going like this. They don't know that they need, I mean, they probably don't even know they need a sign or need permission. So that is also an element of where we need concierge services. I have a technical question. In the wellness corridor section, you use the phrase supply chain, which I know in the document, I know what it is, but I don't understand the reference to it. So can you explain what, what the meaning of how you're using the term here?
Yeah, this, thank you for your question, Councilmember Silva. So this term is used as looking at part of the ecosystem. So what are our strengths as far as the healthcare cluster and some of the existing types of sectors that are already here? And what may they be needing that may not exist in Walnut Creek? Or maybe there is a shortage of it in Walnut Creek. So for example, if John Muir Hospital is on Ignacio Valley Road and they have most of their services within their campus, but maybe they have a shortage of lab space. So identifying that and seeking a way to attract lab space to the corridor within proximity to the existing hospital would be the supply chain deficiency that we would be targeting in this regard.
So you're meaning it in a broader sense, not just a product, they need sterile needles, that you're meaning it in the services that they need within a 10-mile radius?
Yes.
That would be, make them more efficient and make this whole corridor work. Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and move on to the next one then?
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to add up just a couple of comments related to concierge service. One, building off your comments, Councilmember Silva, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, what types of businesses? Is it some of the smaller businesses, the large ones? In addition, where are the other friction points? Because there's a lot with homeowners that come in for a remodel, that same thing. They're not seasoned developers and don't know. So part of the process going forward is to really identify those key friction points, which ones we want to zero on, zero in on. I suspect we may pilot one or two first, get it dialed in, see if we can then expand to some of these other friction points where folks need a little more focus. And the other, nothing else, I'm just going to build on your comment, Mayor, and about other agencies. And just use the moment here to highlight that one of the challenges, we often hear the governor and others in Sacramento like to lay blame on cities and counties for not developing housing and moving things forward. What they often forget to include in those statements is that cities are working within the regulatory framework that was created by the state, which is oftentimes convoluted and complex, as highlighted by the multiple other agencies that need to be coordinated with. So we'll make sure we set realistic expectations for what a concierge service could actually do, those that are within our control. We can certainly try to influence in certain areas, but given the regional nature of water, wastewater, electricity services here in the Bay Area, coupled with a lot of state regulations, there will still be challenges amongst the various entities that are involved in the permitting process. That said, we will try to limit the negative impacts of all of that coordination that needs to occur.
Yeah, sometimes it's just a matter of giving somebody the right phone number and so. All right. Sustainability.
Good evening, Mayor Darling and council members. My name is Candace Rankin-Mumbi. I'm the city's sustainability manager. And I'll be talking to you this evening about our environmental sustainability and climate action priority. This priority builds pretty closely off of a priority from the last cycle. And the six proposed strategic actions under this priority come from the city's sustainability action plan, which the council adopted in July of 2023. That plan at the time had implementation goal timeframes included for the actions within the plan. And about half of those were aimed to be completed by the end of 2026. So all that you'll hear me talk about this evening pulls directly from that that plan and uses those as the base. So get into more detail about these objectives in the next slides. So these first two goals, to decarbonize buildings and transportation, focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions from energy use in both buildings and transportation. And these two sectors account for the vast majority of the climate pollution reduction potential in our sustainability action plan. So decarbonize buildings to start with that priority. It has six actions underneath it. The first two address our own city facilities and our opportunities for us to lead by example by both installing renewable energy solutions and conserving as much energy as is feasible at our facilities. The second two relate to building standards for construction through the Building and Energy Codes in the community. And the 2025 code cycle, that code will be adopted later this year. And staff are currently exploring opportunities, building off the guidance from the plan, to set appropriate standards for a community that would go beyond state minimums for both new and existing buildings and construction. And then these last two actions, they relate to encouraging the community to electrify their homes and businesses by sharing information about incentives and about our community choice aggregator, MCE. Walnut Creek residents and businesses can enroll in a 100% renewable electricity rate plan through MCE. And so we partner with them to really share that opportunity. Looking at our transportation goals here, our four actions really do overlap. And the overall goal here, I like to think of it as reducing the numbers of trips alone in internal combustion engine vehicles in our community. And there's several different ways that we can do that. So the first two actions here really look at electric vehicles and both the chargers that the city provides and then our own fleet of vehicles and how we can transition those to electric vehicles. And staff are currently undertaking a sub-plan of this, a strategic plan built specifically around electric vehicles with a consultant to look at really building out the details of how that will be done. So there will be more details on that coming before you later as well. And then we are also in that looking at both, you know, our our fleet and our chargers in the community. The next action to expand the bike network focuses on capital projects to improve bike facilities in the city. And you'll hear more about these efforts later tonight in other parts of this presentation. And then the last goal relates to our school-related transportation emissions. We really work on this in partnership with our schools and utilize a combination of both outreach and infrastructure improvements to make it more sustainable, how our students commute to and from school. So moving into our next two priorities, first focusing on conserving water. Reducing water use both conserves a precious natural resource and also prevents emissions that would have resulted from treating and transporting that water. And so our first action in this strategy includes exploring opportunities to encourage new buildings and significant retrofits to conserve water beyond state requirements, like we were talking about earlier with the building requirements. And then the second action is to continue our efforts to encourage water conservation throughout our community. And we do this through outreach and education and partnership with our water districts, East Bay Mud and Contra Costa Water District. The next action related to solid waste reduction. This is actually, a lot of people don't think about waste as a climate change goal, but it is the third largest sector in our plan. So this is another great area for us to really work towards reducing waste and then also properly sorting it to reduce emissions related to it. And for these goals, we work very closely with Recycle Smart, our Waste Management Joint Powers Authority, on implementing actions in this area. We plan to formalize policies and procedures that will expand on organics and recycling waste sorting at our city events and facilities to further opportunities for those events that our community comes to. And then we also hope to work with Recycle Smart to partner with interested restaurants on a reusable foodware pilot program, which would aim to reduce plastic utensils or to-go containers from the the service that these restaurants put to the community. And then lastly, we'd like to work with our farmer's market and our community gardens to encourage the use of local food in an effort to reduce both food packaging and food waste. So continue on to our last two strategies here. The fifth strategy, transition to pollution-free outdoor equipment, focuses on reducing pollution from gas-powered leaf blowers. City staff have almost completed transitioning our own fleet of leaf blowers to electric options and expect that transition to complete this summer. And then staff have received a lot of feedback from the community about an interest in banning gas-powered leaf blowers community-wide. And so we are actively working on a policy to implement that. And there will be more information coming on that soon as well. And our last strategy here relates less to preventing climate change from worsening and to more reacting to the conditions that we're already seeing from it and will continue to see. And so it's really looking at improving our community resilience to these changes. So these first two actions related to masks and resilience hubs respond to the increased likelihood of natural disasters and extreme weather that will impact the safety and health of our community. Resilience hubs are multi-use publicly accessible spaces that aim to equitably distribute knowledge and resources pertaining to both climate change and extreme weather response and recovery. And then the last point here ties back to a bit of what you were just hearing about before, but the great opportunity of resources that we have in our economic sector. And looking here to encourage green businesses and have the shift in the economy, there'll be lots of opportunities created from all of these new technologies and regulations that we're seeing come. So looking here to see how we can work with our environmentally conscious businesses. And for that, we plan to partner with both the educational sector and our business community to promote the green workforce training as well as green businesses. So that concludes our sustainability and climate action strategies and I can take questions.
Thank you, Candace. Questions for Candace? Councilmember DeFini?
I was encouraged to hear you mention the foodware reduction efforts. And and one of my questions is, where are we in that process as far as trying to encourage restaurants? And and what are the steps that that we need to do to to maybe implement something like that, to cut down on single-use plastics? And if I could actually ask you to, we used to have the ban on bags, but somehow it seems like all the grocery stores, like, they got around that.
Yes, so to address the the last part about the plastic bag use, I think there's there's kind of a two-pronged approach or response to that. One is that, you know, understanding and remembering these policies is an ongoing effort that that takes a lot of reinforcement. But there was also a technical way that reusable bag was, non-reusable bag was defined in the original version of that regulation where the bags were a certain thickness, they were technically reusable. So there has been some state legislation that's kind of caught that loophole a little bit and and updated it. So I think we'll continue to see a slightly different environment in terms of what bags are available. But that will continue to take education with our businesses. And that ties back to your broader question about also the the foodware generally. So we work very closely with Recycle Smart and their their current waste hauler provider, Republic Services, has sustainability coordinators as well, who go and visit all of our businesses and really try to share information about all of these regulations related to their wastes, including the plastic foodware. So that is an ongoing education effort that's very intensive and that we support as we're able to. Some of how we're hoping to really get across in this is these innovative ideas like this pilot project. So Recycle Smart has developed this program and I believe that they've implemented it with some restaurants within their service area, but not yet any within Walnut Creek. So we're looking in this two-year time period to partner with them to to find a good a business that would be interested in taking something like that on. It can be a big, you know, change to your business practices to start. So it is, it is a big, we need a willing partner who who understands as well.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as like EV charging stations, we had a community member that was interested to know if we have incentives for multifamily units that are pre, you know, already existing to install EV within those those buildings.
Yeah, so we do not, as a city, have our own incentive programs. However, we really partner with our our other utility partners and other incentive programs and promote those. And so MCE, who I mentioned earlier, our community choice aggregator, they actually do have some new funding related to multifamily charger incentives. So that that is a program that's newly available and that this, you know, residents can work with their property owners of the multifamily on. And that information is all available on MCE's website. And they also have a really great incentive finder where they have information on other incentives that maybe aren't theirs but are are from the state as well. So encourage folks to check out their website and look for more information there.
Okay, thank you. And then last question, we have the blowers on the the radar. Are we looking at other gasoline-powered outdoor equipment as well?
So what the direction, that action comes straight from our sustainability action plan. And the direction that is limited to gas-powered leaf blowers, which would be in line with some of the regional regulations that we've seen from that as well from our neighbors. So currently, that isn't the direction that we have to address that community-wide. I will add that in addition to our ban, kind of just to give a sense of the regulatory environment, there is a state law that went into place, I believe, at the beginning of last year that limited the sale of all small off-road engines, which is kind of the technical term for all that landscaping equipment. So there's, there's, you don't have the opportunity to purchase them anymore, but that would be outside this current vision of of this ban.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, did you have any questions on this one?
Nope, I'm pleased with what I see. Thanks.
All right, other council members? Councilmember Silva?
Thank you very much, Candace. And this may be one of the first times that you have presented in front of council.
It is. Good memory.
Congratulations. You're surviving. Excellent job. The, um, there's a lot that's here. This is, can I trust that it is all in alignment with? there's a lot that's here. This is, can I trust that it is all in alignment with the Sustainability Action Plan?
It is. I have a cheat sheet where I can tell you the action number if you'd like.
And when we look at the solid waste, thank you for acknowledging that Recycle Smart somewhat takes the lead and works, we work with six agencies. Municipal. The but our Walnut Creek community is different than the other five communities that are in partnered in Recycle Smart. Are we going to be able to take a targeted approach at, as to encouraging recycling and et cetera? And we can talk about it more when we give our comments. But are we going to be able to take more targeted approach than they're taking at Recycle Smart because of the, just the uniqueness of our agency?
If I understand your question, what I'll say is that we do do quite a bit of programming in our, our Small But Mighty Sustainability Division to add to. A lot of it is outreach at this point, but sharing about the state regulations or other programs that are available. So that is definitely something that we do to build on top of what the outreach and programs that Recycle Smart's already doing. But beyond that, we do have several actions in the plan that relate to waste. I think there's 14 actions under that strategy, some of which are described here and built on that. So that, those are also initiatives that we are taking the lead on or are very closely in partnership with them. Does that address your question?
Yes, and we'll make comments later. So I'll give you a couple of suggestions in the comments section. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Francois?
And I'm good too. Thank you for, I know I caught as you were going through that the 350 comment letter, you had many of those as parentheticals, and Councilmember De Finney asked for a couple of those, so I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm Erica Vandenbrand. I'm the Community Development Director, and I have the fine honor of talking about the general plan update tonight. So as I'm sure that most of you are aware, a general plan is a jurisdictions-guiding framework that expresses a community's values as it relates to, thank you, as it relates to quality of life, land use, environmental resources, capital investments, and all the regulations that help get a community there and engaging with the private sector and others. The overall goal for this particular effort is that at the end of a four-year period, so it's going to go past the initial two years of this biennium, is to have an updated general plan that offers a clear vision of what Walnut Creek aspires to be in 2050, along with the policy, along with the goals, policies, and zoning code updates to help get us there. There we go. There are several strategic objectives that are identified here, but this is just the beginning because just like with any other major effort, like planning a major capital and project, there's a lot of pre-work that needs to be done, not least of which is assembling the team, including the consultants to work on the project to be able to actually get the general plan in place. What we heard during council priority setting was that you have an expectation around robust community engagement and stakeholder outreach. And so that is a very strong element that we are putting in place with this every year and that as we're seeking counsel or as we're seeking consultant efforts, that that's going to be a very strong part of it, along with all the various technical pieces to go. And in fact, we are doing some experiments right now. So we are recently out at the Lotus Street Fair, and we're receiving community feedback, feedback about what they like about Walnut Creek. So the next piece of this is starting to deal with, you know, not just the outreach and so forth, but it's framing things up because there's a lot of technical work that needs to be done too in preparation for actually talking about vision and talking about implications, et cetera, so that there's work to be done, you know, about what our current state is, documenting it in terms of demographics and you know, we heard earlier about economic development, but there are many other things and other aspects of the community. And also forecasting into the future, because as we look 25 years into the future, the world is hopefully going to be a very different place than it is right now. And so being able to articulate what we aspire to be. In order to be able to get there, there are different scenarios that need to be developed, et cetera, which are going to be, which are going to be based in a lot of this technical work that needs to be done. And to be able to describe how the future might unfold, to be able to create different scenarios, as well as the implications environmentally and economically and otherwise, and the trade-offs that would need to be addressed to have the desired future state become a reality. So that's the overall framing for the general plan update. And if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councilmember Francois, do you perhaps have any questions?
So thank you very much for the update. Do you have a general sense for how much of this work will be done by staff? And how much will be done by the consultant?
Good question. It's going to depend on, we're going to be seeking in terms of bidding it out, you know, getting, doing an RFP to see how much resource we can actually get from our consultants. And if there is a gap, then we're going to look at where we have staff capacity to be able to do that. We've already reached out, you know, amongst the executive team and in the different departments. And as I'm sure that our city manager had shared with council earlier, that this is a significant lift for the entire organization. And so it's going to be a hybrid of those things. And depending on how the RFP comes back, we may, may need to adjust scope a little bit.
So there's a possibility then to, to seeing if, you know, having the consultant do as much as possible and seeing what the capacity is in-house, but also maybe reassessing potentially augmenting CDD staff to address any shortfall?
I theoretically, yes, but I think right now we're going to proceed as if we have it all dialed in because we have a great talented staff and a lot of ability to be able to not only within the Community Development Department, but to reach out with our colleagues and other departments and, you know, work on these different pieces. And so that, for example, in the city manager's office in our Economic Development side, there are folks that have, you know, expertise in various areas that we could rely on. And that's also true in other departments. And so I hesitate to say definitively yes to any of these things because it will depend on what our consultants come back with, because in the current bidding environment, we anticipate that if it had been last year, things, they weren't quite as hungry. Now consultants are hungrier.
And then most cities seem to form like a general plan advisory committee made up of, you know, mostly community members, but also sometimes including representatives of the commissions and maybe a council representative as are you envisioning that as part of the process?
So whenever we sit there and look at it and look at best practices, having a group that's representative of the community provides the clearest lens and the clearest vision. The planning commissioners, each one of the different commissioners in the new as council also have the ability to have very frequent check-ins and to weigh in, et cetera. But the best practice is to try and keep the two realms a little bit more separated so that, you know, the, those that are representative of the community are able to speak on behalf of the community and look through that lens.
Just, just generally then, last question, the idea of the schedule for going out for RFP for the consultant?
So we're looking at doing that later on in the summer. We've already put together a quite robust RFP based off of looking at other jurisdictions and so forth. And we're trying to do exactly what you had alluded to earlier about which pieces are we best able to deal with in-house and where we're going to be prioritized in terms of having consultant assistance and to be able to gauge that more effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others on general plan? Councilmember Silva?
Councilmember Francois asked a couple of the questions that I was going to ask and is it safe to assume that when the vision of how this will roll out and how many people would be on a steering committee and what the composition might be, et cetera, that will come to council because these are real policy questions for the 25 years into the future?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And is it also? I think that will be very helpful because a lot of us were here before and a lot of us weren't. So, and things change. The other thing is, is there a vision in this that there would be? It was called community conversations in the previous version of this. There were three or four meetings that were essentially town halls and people were really invited to attend. And it was somewhat like standing at a farmer's market and just let capturing people as they go by, but it was by invitation attendance, really. People were encouraged and invited and et cetera. Is that envisioned upfront as well?
Absolutely that, as well as, as well as various technological means, potentially questionnaires and other forms of, you know, because people communicate in so many different ways now. And so the, you know, foray into a farmer's market type of approach, we started off with that this past Wednesday. Just talking about the community to kind of get the community used to actually talking about city things. And as we go forward, we'll be experimenting with a number of different things. If we have a really clever consultant that helps gamify things, that would also be of interest because people communicate and they engage in very different ways now.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
No questions, thanks.
And I think Councilmember Francois hit most of mine. The one I was still wondering about was when I've looked back at the previous general plan and thought about what are the gaps? Is that part of what you guys are doing when you're looking at best practices? Like what has really changed in the last 25 years? You know, and, and what are the like sustainability being one and how we communicate and some of those things?
Absolutely. And, you know, this is not going to be a one-and-done kind of thing because there's going to be continuous engagement. So you as council members, the community at large, our stakeholders in the business community, and also our partners, you know, there had been some discussion earlier about other agencies and so forth. We're all going to be talking along the way. And it's like, where are there gaps? Where can we identify that things that, you know, we can help use this as a form, format to be able to fill some of those gaps and make it easier? Because the intention is that by 2050, we realize the community that we aspire to be in that timeframe. And I want to try and make it as easy as possible to do the things that the community wants.
Yeah, I, I found when I was starting to go back through it and think about the general plan, I just went and looked at like three other general plans that had just been done. It's like, ooh, that's a good idea. Ooh, that's a good idea. So I'm sure you guys are working on that. It's gonna be fun.
I think it will be.
I think it will be. Thank you. Moving on to parks and building stuff.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm super excited to be able to present this council priority. This has been one, many of the projects associated with this council priority have been in the works for quite a long time, specifically our new aquatics and the Heather Farm Community Center. So so when the councilmembers chose this as one of their priorities, a lot of the work was already in place and we were moving forward. So I was really excited to see this. So our focus tonight will be obviously the projects related to the Measure O funding, along with current park and recreation facilities that are in our current capital budget and the 26, 27 capital budget. So my focus tonight will be forming objectives for the strategy. And it will focus on the existing park and facility improvements as outlined in the 24, 25 capital budget and the 26, 27 capital budget. Work will also include the, the big one, the new aquatic and community center and which is, you know, moving forward. And then design and construct new and improved pedestrian bike infrastructure that encourages physical activity. And again, we've made a lot of progress in this area. So it was nice to see that this is going to be one of the strategic objectives. And then also, lastly, just begin looking at the existing Clark Pool and sort of imagine, reimagine what that space might look like in our parks. So the first one I'll focus on is the park and, the existing park facilities and improvements. As you are aware, the ballfield lighting is underway at Tice Park. This will allow expanded use of that park specifically for soccer and, and other activities that happen out at Tice Valley. Just being able to work into the evening, especially during those winter months, will really expand the use and make it a little easier on some of the programming that happens at our other fields. The synthetic turf project at Heather Park is also underway. And again, will expand the use there. If you've been out there, there's a lot of excavation, a lot of piles, piles of dirt out there, a lot of equipment moving around. And it's, and things are going well. That project is moving forward. So two projects that are underway, so we're excited about that. And then the, the next objective here, or not objective, the, the next project that we have underway there is the court resurfacing at Arbelaure Park and Rudyard Park. So this is the tennis courts that are out there and also the basketball court that is out there at those parks. These parks haven't received some treatment for quite some time. We did some preliminary repairs. And then this is just sort of finishing the work that needs to be done out there at those parks. And then also the playground equipment upgrade at Civic Park, although this, and Walden Park, although this, these projects have not started, the, the outreach to the community has began to try and see what the community would like to see at these parks in terms of the playground amenities out there. And then last but not least, looking at the pickleball and bocce facilities and possibly trying to incorporate some of that or those two types of uses in our parks, as long as funding is available. So the next objective I'd like to focus on is, let's see, not gonna work, is the, the phase one of the Heather Farm project. As you might be aware, this project, the new aquatics Heather Farm facility is broken up into two phases. The first phase will really be the lake expansion and the realignment of the pond edge. And I'm happy to report that we have received all three of the environmental permits to make this project move forward. So we're excited, we're out to bid, yes. There's been a lot of work and I attribute a lot, most, a lot of that work, the heavy lifting to Mike Vickers, who is here tonight. But as I mentioned, we are out to bid. We did a job walk yesterday, so we're excited. We had five or six interested contractors that are willing to do that type of work, and it's pretty specialized. So our goal is to receive those bids by the end of May and then bring it to council for approval and then start construction. In between, maybe in the next month or so, you'll see a planned groundbreaking event and all of you will be invited. So.
Can I ask a question here?
This is not a long one.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to go back to this slide then.
Okay, sounds good. And then fa- a little bit of a delay there. Okay. And then phase two, we're looking at, starting in parallel with phase one, we'll be going out and pre-qualifying contractors because this is such a large project. We want to make sure that we get contractors that are skilled and have the experience to be able to do a project of this magnitude. We're hopeful to get We're hopeful to get this out to bid, not hopeful, we will be getting this out to bid, by the fall of this year and, and so that, that's our goal. And then construction will start early in January, so. And then the next objective here is to really improve our pedestrian and bicycle experience in, in, in and around our streets, building connectors to the downtown, looking at just really building amenities that make it safe for bicycle use and our pedestrians. And as you can see, some of these projects are already in the works and then we've got many projects in the capital budget as outlined. And I can just kind of go over some of these, that one is the Wiggett and Contra Costa Canal Trail, if you've ever been there, it's just sort of, it's a connector from the, the park there that's, and then also Mount Diablo Boulevard and Bont Lane intersection, it's kind of over by the, I want to say it's over by the, the St. Mary's Church there. And then Mount Diablo Boulevard, or I'm sorry, and the southwest, west corner of Oak Grove Road in Ignatio Valley, it's a tricky intersection right there, so there's, those amenities will be going in there. And then the Wiggett Lane and Mitchell Drive intersection. So those are some of the things that, or some of the projects that we have in the And then the last one here is to begin, you probably noticed this money set aside for the planning of this, this, the Clark Pool site. You can see it there, the footprint, it's a pretty large area that we'll be looking at. And so the, the goal here is to develop a subcommittee with, you know, active community members and then at the same time, you know, hire an architect, a landscape architect to assist with that process and just develop a list of amenities and then take those amenities to the public and get some feedback. Oh, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, now it's time for questions on building cool stuff. Councilmember Silva.
Oh, do you want me to?
So I appreciate the resorting of the, these are in a different order than they were in the documents that we were receiving and I appreciate it because if, if you don't lead with your big one, I don't, or your existing ones. I was confused when I looked at this and I hope, so the clarification is really for everyone at home. Phase one is not building the whole thing because this is just, phase one is the reconfiguration of the lake.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. If you look on this photo or this schematic, you'll see the green areas, thank you. That is the lake, oh, the, the lake, right there? Okay, let me see, yeah, so right there, thank you. Excellent. This is the lake expansion, this is the lake expansion. And, and if you look over here, the work will really be focused on realigning that pond edge. So that is phase one. And then the reason why you have, we highlighted this is the dirt that will be removed from the lake will be regraded out in that area. And, and then the plan is to replant trees and really make that area a nice, right now it's an open field, grass field. So the work, you know, this will include, after everything is graded out and sort of recontoured, we'll add trees to, to that area.
So phase one, which is May 2025 to June, July, when, when will phase one conclude?
So phase one is slated to conclude by October.
Okay. So it's the lake, the reconfiguration of the lake and, and the ancillary work?
Yeah.
So that means that phase two is the actual construction of the new pool and the new community center?
The fun stuff, yes.
The water person thinks this is fun. All right, so that's helpful because I, I was a little confused initially. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Francois?
Ask a few questions about maybe the ones that are sleeper ones in your presentation on the playground equipment upgrades, just in terms of outreach, just wanted to add, are you reaching out to like moms and dads groups, frequent users of those, of the playground equipment?
Yeah, so the idea is to put a, a pop-up out there at the site, specifically there's certain times, if you're familiar with these parks, they're, they're a little crowded during the day. And so we would go out there and solicit feedback on those crowded times of the day in addition to hitting like farmer's market and, and, and other community events.
There might, yeah, I'll save it for comments, I guess, but the, these, some of these specialized groups, you know, yoga mommies and things like that, I know, I think we first got involved in the city because of the upgrade that was being done at Larky Park near where we lived at the time. And it, I think it enlisted a lot of community engagement and interest in the playground upgrades. I'm glad to see we're doing that. Then in terms of the traffic improvements, this one piqued my interest too in terms of Mount Diablo and Bont in particular, but just in general, are you talking about flashing signals or some more visible kind of markings for pedestrians there?
I, you know what, I, I'm getting the nod from Smitar, but I, I'll let her expand.
No, you felt her eyes boring into your back.
She loves this stuff, she, she's dying to get up here.
Okay, hi, Smitar Boardman, City Engineer. So yes, we actually had put this project out to bid and you actually accepted the rejection of those bids on your consent calendar earlier, but this is one of those locations that we'll be getting these flashing lights at this intersection because we already did these striping improvements. So this is just that extra layer, but we will be bringing it back to council once we get the scope refined a little bit.
And that's unique to this intersection, there's other ones who are getting different treatments like you're showing.
Yeah, and actually that, so the improvement of adding those flashing lights, we're actually doing it at multiple locations and that's in alignment with the safe system approach, which is the systemic way of addressing traffic safety, looking at similar contexts and applying the same treatment at all those locations.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember DeFini? Don't go somewhere, Smitar.
I was gonna catch you later, still up there, but I can, I was curious, Rich, the, the courts on, in Arbola, Arbola and Rudyard, what, what is the cost of the resurfacing on those courts?
So collectively, we just went out to bid around the 600,000 mark.
For both?
Yes.
That's both sides? And at Rudyard, there's, how many, how many tennis courts are, do, is it three courts there that, that are being resurfaced or?
There, there's three, yeah, three.
Okay, and so it's about 300,000 for those?
Roughly, yeah.
Those three?
Yeah.
Okay. And the, the pickleball courts at Rudyard, those are, do, those were touched a little more recently than the tennis courts? Can you, can you tell me about that?
Yeah, so the tennis, the tennis courts, a couple of years ago, received some minor repairs and so we're going, we're coming back to do sort of the final resurfacing. In terms of the existing bocce resurfacing project, it was done about eight years ago and you figure that, the use of that is between eight and 10. And we've, we've evaluated those courts, the bocce courts.
The pickleball courts?
Or the, I'm sorry, the, I, bocce, I don't know where that's coming from. The pickleball courts, we've actually went out and looked at the pickleball courts and there's some minor cracking, but we don't, right now, they're looking like they're in pretty good shape and, other than the minor cracking, the striping looks good. But it is in the 10-year CIP for the next cycle, which would be 28, so it is listed in the 10-year CIP.
And how much would it cost to do those, two additional courts roughly?
Those two courts were probably around 200,000 to 300,000. So if we were to, you know, do a full resurfacing of those courts, repainting, all that, yeah.
Okay, all right. The timing of the, the Clark Swim Center, when do you think that the community will be engaged for that? Because I know there's some interested parties in that, I'm sure.
As you can see, we're really busy. In fact, I think I had said at one point, and maybe it was the last council meeting, we're gonna try and get to that in the fall, you know, start, start a process. And it might spill into 26, just based on the workload that we have and.
Community engagement?
Yeah, the community engagement process is just, you know, that will probably start fall of this year into next year and then we'll go from there.
And I would just add to that, in terms of timing, something to keep in mind, obviously it's important to future reuse, but if you look at the timeframe for the construction of the new project of the new community center, aquatic center, we're targeting, I know this makes Rich squirm a bit, but we're targeting end of 2027 for the completion of the new building, which is fairly aggressive, and then there would be the demolition of the existing aquatic center after that, so we're into 28. That's if all is on schedule, which I'm hoping we are, but obviously a lot of big public projects can be extended for various reasons. So I mention that because I think we're looking at at least three years before that site would be viable to be developed into something else, so there is some time to, to work on this project. And in fact, it'd be, we wouldn't want to start too soon, one, because of workload constraints, but also some of the feedback might be dated by the time we would actually conduct the work. So we want to make sure we time it in a way that makes sense in terms of when the actual property would be available to be repurposed.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
No further questions.
Okay, thanks. My only question, thinking about the community input on reusing Clark Swim Center, that location, because you do have houses there, is there any value in having, I could see noise associated with that? I mean, if pickleball's a potential use, then noise is something. Having some of the sound studies before you start doing the, the outreach, or is that something that you pretty much know you're gonna have to do no matter what?
I, I think that'll be something, depending on what we end up with, will be something that we do. Right now, the pool generates a certain level of noise, right? So, but if it's something like pickleball, we, we've learned from, you know, feedback from our community, that's something we're gonna be looking at pretty close.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, thanks. Any more questions on parks? Jamie, you can't run out the door now.
Good evening, I'm not that tall. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council. Jamie Knox, Chief of Police, and it's my pleasure to present our objectives. I guess I should advance to my slide here. Got it. To support your council's goal of keeping public safety and social wellness a priority here in Walnut Creek, and those priorities include strengthening and modernizing our police force, using proactive strategies to address crime, coordinating responses to homelessness and mental health issues, and fostering crime prevention partnerships and promoting programs in our neighborhoods and our business districts, and improving traffic safety for everyone who travels in the city, and bolstering our preparedness and resilience against the growing challenges of regional disasters such as wildfires, earthquakes, droughts, floods, and other hazards. So I'll dive into a little bit more detail here. So first, to maintain an effective and innovative police department, we're committed to exploring technology to include artificial intelligence to streamline tasks and improve system interoperability. We'll continue to utilize social media as a community engagement tool. It's proven to be a valuable resource to keep the public informed. And we will evaluate our citywide camera systems to look for opportunities to improve our ALPR system and our traffic management cameras. And we will continue our proactive police response to crime trends by establishing stronger community connections and identify target areas for crime intervention. We will not only rely on data-driven approaches to do this, but also rely on community sentiment so that we can ensure we're making people feel safe. We'll also refine and streamline our internal communication channels to improve intelligence and information sharing. And to coordinate joint agency response to homelessness and mental health challenges, we'll continue to collaborate with city and community partners in response to issues arising from homelessness and collaborate with city and community partners to promote inclusive disaster preparedness. And this creates an emphasis on addressing our vulnerable populations that are even more at risk during some disaster situations. So now that we have our new crime prevention specialist onboard, we're gonna continue to develop our crime prevention partnerships and programs. Primarily, that'll consist of establishing a neighborhood watch procedure and program and a crime-free business program. And next will be, this is a big one, it's always an issue here with traffic, so we will continue to improve traffic, transit, pedestrian, and bicycle safety for everybody. This includes increasing, increasing traffic enforcement that is complaint and data-driven, increased driver education, we'll continue to support our grant initiatives and work closely with the Office of Traffic Safety on, on those endeavors. We will be increasing DUI enforcement. Since I've been here, we haven't been able to hold a DUI checkpoint because now the laws are very complicated, you need specialized training and specialized equipment to do that, so we're hoping, I'd love to be able to do that be, before the end of the year, so that's our goal. And also establish a traffic safety working group, which we're currently working on now, and improve internal communication and coordination efforts. And finally, implementation, or continue to support the implementation of Vision Zero, and as you know, that's to eliminate severe injuries and traffic fatalities. And then for enhancing our community and regional disaster preparedness and resiliency, we want to increase our community emergency response team and personnel training opportunities, deliver emergency trainings to city staff, which has already started, promote disaster readiness and guide community members to proactively prepare for disasters, and finally promote disaster preparedness that addresses the needs of our vulnerable populations, as I mentioned before. And with that, this was the slide that opened it up for any questions.
I feel safer already.
I'm on, I'm in the hot seat now.
Yeah. Questions for the chief? Councilmember DeFini? You're good? Councilmember Silva?
Thank you very much. Help me understand, and I was working with the document itself, is what we're going to do to enhance the CERT, because it's kind of gone fallow. My husband is a CERT volunteer and if we want people to be prepared in the neighborhoods for.
It's a great question. We're working on that actively. We actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Margaret Campos, who is an outgoing CERT coordinator. So we're getting a bunch of downloads from, from her. And we'll be working actively to get me in front of that group and to identify what the next couple of years looks like, not only as far as training goes, but help support them in keeping that program alive.
In the same vein, Neighborhood Watch?
Yes.
It kind of read, the way I read it was, let's have a presentation and actually you need to outreach to the neighborhoods and get them engaged and interested in being part of the solution, yes?
That's correct. Yeah, we've never really had a formal program here. It does take a little bit to manage. Now that we have somebody in place to do that, we want to formalize the program. I have a grand vision of, thank you, during National Night Out, not only having our National Night Out in a centralized location like we've done in the past at Civic Park and also Broadway Plaza, but also having staff go out to neighborhood block parties, because that's the whole point of it, is to get your neighborhoods out into the streets, talking to one another, building those relationships, so that's gonna be a priority of mine.
to one another, building those relationships, so that's gonna be a priority of mine.
And on the same vein, guess what the other one is? The Business Crime Prevention Program.
Yes. So there, we're going to explore a crime-free business model, which essentially is just an education effort for businesses on how they can harden their businesses to be more resilient and less of a target. So that, there's a lot of legwork involved in that, and it does take some time, but again, now that we have a staff person in place, I'm confident that we'll be able to get that program up and running by the end of the year.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Just a few, Chief, thank you for the update. I'm not sure if this is actually directed to you or someone else on staff. In terms of wildfire evacuation drills, is there anything planned? And what do you envision kind of happening in the next, this year and next year on that front?
Well, we did a town hall last year, we've done a couple of town halls, in fact. I think the next step would be to put together more of a tabletop exercise and look at, you know, we do have some current technology that we're using that would help us model what an evacuation might look like, especially in communities that present some challenges, such as Rossmore. So I think that would be the next step, is to start doing some tabletop exercises and modeling what that could potentially look like.
That makes sense. And then in terms of the Traffic Safety Working Group, I was interested in seeing that, and maybe that's more for Smedar, kind of when, when that might get kicked off? And will it involve, how broadly are you en viewing traffic? Does it include e-bikes and...
Yes. And I think the goal is, I'm gonna let Smedar take it, but I think the goal is to meet quarterly, and I just saw a meeting pop up on my calendar, so.
Spot on. Uh, yes, so Traffic Safety Working Group, that actually is a commission, it's, it's a subcommittee for the Transportation Commission, so there's two commissioners who've been assigned to it. And then it, it's really a higher-level coordination meeting with the two departments, police and Public Works, along with those commissioners, and it's really just that advisory, more policy-level discussion on some of the bigger issues, or how to assess or just keep on track with making sure that we actually are following through with our Vision Zero goal.
But it's a new group, though, right?
It is, it's a new group, but the assignments actually got done during the March Transportation Committee meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Hi, thanks. Couple, couple of questions, Mayor. First, I apologize if I missed this, there was a quick little cutout, but Chief, did you mention something about the homeless outreach team, and where are we on that? And if you already did mention it, I apologize for repeating the question.
No, that's a good question, actually. So we are fully staffed now on that team, so they've been very active.
Great, great. Secondly, without school resource officers, what's the current plan for emergencies at the schools, and how quickly is the PD able to mobilize on that, if it's needed? Hopefully not.
Well, we've been put through our paces a couple of times on some very minor events, but we have specialized officers who are liaisons with the schools, they work out of our Detective Bureau, and they have a very good relationship. The school has direct access to me and my staff, and just over the past, I would say, six months, we've had a couple of events where we've proven to respond very effectively. Something, and I've said this before, if something happens to the school, at a school, we drop everything, and everybody goes, everybody. People clear the station, we all go, we take that very seriously.
Great, thank you, that's good to hear. You mentioned something about cameras, getting more LPRs and traffic cameras. What about high-def street cameras that can deter or find criminals? Is that, is there a plan for having more of those?
Not at this time. We have looked at some technologies, some deployable mobile cameras that we could bring to special events, but we have other technology available to us, such as a tether drone, but the ALPRs have been very helpful. A lot of the crime that we get is regional crime, so people are usually in cars, so it's being able to track those cars down that help us solve the crime. And cameras, in particular in intersections or general city areas, are not really proven to be a deterrent. If you have them in more specialized places, such as parking garages or parks, usually the studies show that that's more of a deterrent, not necessarily just general cameras throughout the city.
Okay, okay. And really, my last question is, are there areas that the police department would like to see us provide more support, support in, or that we aren't currently? I'm thinking of tools or resources. Is there anything else that you think would be helpful to ensuring the safety of people that live here and people that visit?
Well, I think your council's been very supportive of, of me and my staff and, and all of our priorities, and obviously, you know, being well-funded is very helpful. Technology does come with a cost, but I think that's the wave of the future, is being able to integrate technology in a very holistic, smart way, but also so that it's fiscally sustainable, and that's something that we're exploring as part of the priorities.
Great, great. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember DeFini, you had one more question?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna maybe hold it for comments, but then it was, it was brought up, so I want to touch on it a little further, the e-bikes. You know, it's something we're seeing more frequently, injuries in, in the hospital, and, you know, we, we all see these kids flying up and down streets, going quite fast on what are look like little motorcycles. How hard is that from an enforcement standpoint? I mean, what, what's your lens on sort of ideal scenario? Do we, as far as trying to regulate that or trying to address it? Because the state hasn't really passed anything yet, so maybe it's beneficial for us to look at something at the city level?
It, it is challenging. We do have some local tools, we have an ordinance regarding, you know, bicycles on sidewalks, for example, so that's a tool that we can use. Sometimes it's hard to tell how old somebody is, there is an age requirement, if you're under eighteen, you, you're required to have a helmet. If you have one of the faster bikes that can go upwards of twenty-eight miles per hour, you're supposed to have a helmet on no matter what. We do, we did a social media blast, I believe it was earlier today, on, you know, May is Bicycle Safety Month, and we will be having, doing some targeted enforcement later this month for those types of violations. But it is, it is challenging, but we try to use other tools, and of course, take an, an education approach first, and enforcement second.
Thanks.
Alright, Mike?
Mayor, just, you know, a few things to add around e-bikes. There are several Assembly Bills and Senate Bills right now that are being considered, you know, like the chief said, requiring the use of helmets, while, when, when operating an e-bike, there's a legislation, a proposed bill that prohibits the sale of, I guess, motors to enhance bikes, to increase the speed. So there's, there's various legislation around that, but they're still very early in the process. But it is being looked at, not just on a local level, but on a national level as well.
Alright. Okay. On the license plate reader cameras, and this is a little bit selfish, because our neighborhood one is in our front yard, and somebody was asking me this, I said, "I don't know." Are those accessible? We've had a lot of discussion in this country about enforcement by ICE. Are those license plate reader cameras that we have throughout the city, are they accessible to people outside of PD?
We do not share outside of California, but we do share information with other law enforcement agencies, but that's generally very limited to municipal police departments, sheriff's departments. I may need to do a little research to give you a definitive answer on, on who has access outside of those entities, but generally, my understanding is they do not.
Okay. And then, this is, this might be a Dan answer rather than a Jamie. Looking at the wildfire preparedness, it really focuses on responding to an emergency, and there's another port, part to wildfire preparedness, which is getting ready proactively, you know, the, the home hardening and things like that. Is that something we're really relying on CON FIRE to deal with?
Some of both, and certainly, our Public Works team can speak to this as well. There's obviously the defensible space that all homeowners are responsible to do, there's enforcement of that, and our open space, we put in significant breaks, fire breaks, there's grazing that's done with goats, I believe, maybe some cattle as well, in various areas to help. There is a big focus with Contra Costa Fire and partnership with Rossmore to tie in for the shaded fuel breaks, so those are, you know, big prevention efforts that we're involved in, as this part of the city.
Okay, and then, I know some areas have really focused on developing firewise communities within the city, and I know Rossmore is one. Have we thought about whether or not that's, as we do our community outreach, having the resources to help people understand how to put together a firewise community if they're interested?
Yeah, I mean, that is something we've more so relied on, our, our county fire department to take the lead on, but that's something we can certainly talk with them more about.
Okay, alright, thank you. And with that, we're good on this, and we will go to public comment on everybody, all at once. Anyone? Anyone? Oh, no public comment. So let's come back up here, and we'll start with closing comments, starting with Councilmember DeFini.
Can I ask?
Oh.
Are we gonna do these? Each of us do all five, or are we gonna take each topic? Because if we have to reach consensus, it's gonna be perhaps easier if we do this one priority at a time.
Alright, we'll do one at a time.
Well, I, I, you know, I just...
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I was just thinking about it. It, I'm not anticipating this being a big knockdown drag-out based on the questions, but why don't we talk, do comments on economic development, recognizing that it is nine-twenty at night, and Kevin is three hours ahead of us, so let's be efficient about this.
I'm nine hours ahead of everybody, so.
Yeah. Economic development.
As far as economic development, one of the, one of the things that I would like to propose is that we put aside some money from our parking fund to potentially fund incentives for outdoor dining space in the downtown area. That was the only thing I have on that particular subject. Do you want me to be specific in numbers, or is, there's a surplus there, and if we, you know, we don't have to come up with a number, but if we just maybe earmark it as something we can use, then at least it's available.
Yeah, and, and we'll have to look to the city manager on this, because there's, there's the budget that we're going to be passing, and then there's the priorities and the work plan. And so, we have outdoor dining here, does that capture what you want to do? And then we'd have to look to staff on how we would fund it. I don't think we are going to, tonight, say, "Here is something we want, and here is how you will fund it." That is a budget activity. So I think if you're satisfied with how the outdoor dining is captured here, then we can leave it to staff then to identify.
So I could comment, I think the fact that we want to incentivize it, but assuming it is by spending money and giving money away is putting, is a little premature. I think there are multiple alternatives to incentivize it and encourage it. I could offer three different ways to approach it here, but that's not what we're here, and I don't think there is as much a surplus in the parking fund.
Yeah, I, I think what we're trying to do is, we're not gonna argue about the budget tonight, because that's not on the agenda. This is, this is the priorities and the work plan. And so, we want to stick to, does the action and the work plan capture what you might want to do, what you want staff to be doing in this two-year cycle, in this priority cycle?
It is fairly broad, but I guess we can hone in on it later.
Yeah, I mean, if there's specific things that you want to make sure, activities, not funding sources. Okay. Councilmember Silva?
I would augment this by saying that I think we need to, this does capture the higher level. We will see more detail in the next round. We haven't seen the detailed work plans yet, but I think also to say that we want to incentivize outdoor dining, considering the policies that we put in place in the outdoor dining program, one of which was equity, and things like that. So there's more to be considered, but I think staff is hearing us on that regard. Also, in the economic development, I just want to mention that, I'm just gonna say this here, that I think what we have is, we have one policy that has been put into, around traffic safety and traffic improvements, and I think we need to look at it a little more holistically, because it seems to touch just about every policy area. We're looking at it long-term, in terms of general plan, we're looking at it in terms of safety, we are looking at it in terms of encouraging more economic vitality, because if people can, if we've got better sidewalks downtown, they're gonna be, feel comfortable to park once and walk. And we have it also in recreation and wellness, so I would like to see in the next round of economic development, but I'm just gonna say it once, then I won't say it every time, is maybe look at ensuring that we write it as one action area. And I know that creates a sixth priority, but we've got, we've got five prior, five different priorities, and they're all mentioning in some way, shape, or form, traffic safety, pedestrian safety, bike safety, and, and wellness and health. Maybe there's a way to not look at it vertically, but look at it horizontally or something, and it might be easier, because it's then, then it's truly collaborative and across all policy areas. So I'll say it here, because I actually think it belongs in economic development as well. And I just wanted to say about economic development, that the work we're doing now is definitely going to feed into the general plan work, because otherwise, we'd be doing it to feed into the general plan work, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Silva, or Francois? Somebody over on my left.
Wow. I think you just insulted her.
No. I've been bald before during chemotherapy.
I, I think staff's on the right track with this. I appreciated Mike's report. I'm interested in terms of the, the flexible zoning and the improving the permitting process, and what we're able to come up with in terms of action items there. And then I appreciated the city manager's comments about, you know, we, we're focused on kind of businesses and improving the permitting process for them, which is important, but let's not forget the, the average resident, who is also doing improvements to their home, and making sure that we've got this customer-friendly, you know, face to them, and that they're getting the same preferential treatment as we're trying to give to some of our commercial businesses.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Regarding this particular topic, and really all the topics, I, my questions and comments that I made at the time, I think, I think we're on the right track. I'm, I'm really happy with what we've seen, not just with economic development, with, but with all of the different priorities, so I appreciate that.
Alright, thanks. My only comment on this one was, when we have stakeholder collaboration, we have a number of actual planning efforts going on with the Chamber and Walnut Creek downtown, and making sure that we're tracking what they're planning, and making sure we're taking where it integrates with our economic development plan, and making sure those are tracked or tacked together as best possible. Sustainability, we'll start this time.
Thank you. Two comments, and I think because the Sustainability Action Plan is sitting there, a lot of the work has been done, and we're just picking off of it. When we talk about decarbonizing the transportation network, we have to recognize that also means, going back to pedestrian network, bicycle network, and in this one instance, also the transit network, because that saves us a huge amount of greenhouse gas emissions if we can actually get the buses carrying more people. And the other thing, when I was talking about the solid waste and recycling, so when we have six agencies involved in Recycle Smart, Lafayette, Maraga, Arinda, and Danville are primarily suburban residential. We are, we are the bulk of the commercial that is in the Solid Waste Authority, and so a lot of what they're doing at Recycle Smart, we can see the numbers. The challenge we have in Walnut Creek is not single-family households, it is multifamily households and commercial. And we may need to do something using some of the Recycle Smart money that actually belongs to Walnut Creek. We might need to use some funds to actually do targeted analysis of what's not working, and who, what people aren't sorting and are sorting, and then how... and what people aren't sorting and are sorting, and then how best to do that outreach. I don't think we should assume it's the way they would do it in these, those other agencies. But we do have money separate to be able to do something like that.
Yeah, I think we're on a great, great path here, too. Candice, I think with all the hard work we did with the environmental sustainability plan, I guess I'm, just a small point, but in terms of the permits for requiring waste sorting for events that require a permit from the city, makes perfect sense to me. And so keep up the good work and looking forward to seeing this being implemented.
Councilmember De Finney?
Looking at the Develop Foodware Reduction Pilot, I was thinking, perhaps we could provide some city incentive for businesses that do it, or create a campaign where they get a marketing sticker or something they can put on their door front saying that you're, you know, Walnut Creek, you know, eco-friendly, plastic reduction type of business. If we could promote a campaign like that, it might be helpful to sort of launch that from, from this initial pilot.
So there's a, there are pilots going on in Lafayette, and they're not getting the kind of results they had hoped they would. So we have to be mindful of, a couple of communities are ahead of us and what they're learning from that, and that'll help.
Mayor Protam?
Nothing further. I like, again, I like the direction that we're looking at. Obviously, there's been a lot of work that's been done in the last six years with this priority, and I, I'm encouraged about the direction moving forward in the face of some challenges that are coming from, from a top-down.
Yeah, and I guess my only comment is, I think you guys are doing a great job in partnership with MCE. I love the electrification fair you did last year and things like that. We'll just have to keep an eye on it. Right now, MCE is not projecting that the federal actions will create problems for them, so hopefully we're good, but I'm knocking on wood as I say that. So general plan update comments. Nothing from De Finney, Silva?
Really pushing robust outreach because the more you learn upfront, the faster you go with it in putting it all together.
Francois?
Yeah, I'd agree with that comment, and I think it's a topic that, like a lot of topics, it's, you need to make effort to try to get people engaged and to get their opinions in different mediums and how you ask the questions and kind of how you present the information. And then I know that there'll be a lot of opportunity for council in, policy input on this, so I'm looking forward to that. And I appreciated the mayor's comments about the gaps analysis, and I know that works underway. So looking forward to having a consultant on board, hopefully by later this summer.
Mayor Protam?
No further comments.
Yeah, I guess on this one, my only comment is, as you lay out the stakeholder process, how we integrate the commissions into that and how we look for cross-commission relationships, and then what are the steps, making sure that council is keeping up with you and not, you know, is in the loop. That's going to be a real trick to this whole thing because, you know...
And I would just add to that, if I may, Mayor, you know, I do anticipate considerable number of updates to council, possibly study sessions, and we're going to need to keep that in mind in planning for the council meeting calendar for the coming years. I anticipate more meetings and longer meetings.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, and I think making sure that we've thought through that which are the key points where we have enough information to sound semi-intelligent on the issue.
Heads up, I was on the planning commission when we were doing the last general plan, and we spent a year on it after it was done through the steering committee. We were a year working on it, and we got so tired that we met every Thursday for a year because we didn't have enough time at a general, regular meeting to do both types of business. So just, maybe we weren't very efficient, but I'm...
We could be so much more efficient now. Moving on to building stuff. Councilmember De Finney?
As far as the court resurfacing at Red Gear Park, I'd like to see if there is a number that if, that if the community contributes to the project, could potentially make the project affordable for us to do on a shorter, in a shorter period of time. Because there's been some community members that have expressed that perhaps they could find some private funding. So maybe there's a threshold where it becomes affordable.
So I think what you're saying, if I were to be putting it towards, is evaluate whether there is an opportunity to partner with the community to accelerate pickleball court resurfacing.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying.
Okay.
Knew that's what you were saying. Councilmember Silva?
I real, this is an exciting time with all these capital projects, and I know all of these, this, there's a ton of work here. I'm very mindful on the, just, the, starting the outreach process on what to do with the existing pool facility, that that costs money and time. And I don't want us to get our hearts set on it happening in a certain amount of time when we haven't seen what the cost of the pool itself is and the whole project. So I, I'm just being, I just, if, if everything could be done at once, wow, great. But I also know that we want them focused on getting the big project done on time and on budget.
Amen. Councilmember Francois?
I think this is really exciting. I mean, I'm looking, I was a little disappointed to hear that it might be late 2027. I thought it was going to be more like summer of 2027 when that, I can break out my Speedo and kind of get in the...
Okay, that's a vision.
I was hoping to get some giggles over that. So I think this all looks great. I mean, I could quibble in terms of the order that this is put in, but it...
I liked the order that was on the PowerPoint tonight.
Yeah, right. I think just whatever's logical and makes sense, and there's, it's probably not time preference, but, and then just in some of the other issues that were raised, I mean, I think I'm glad, there's big things that we're doing, and there's also a lot of small impactful things we're doing, and, you know, Mount Diablo and Baut crossing walk, I've tried to cross at that intersection before, and I've almost been taken out by multiple vehicles. And it's such a high-volume roadway that I think identifying those types of areas and trying to make it safer for people to cross the street and to walk is great, and the playground equipment upgrades are fun, too. So I'm all on board.
Mayor Protam, did you have anything?
I like the plan that's been set out regarding some of the plans that may or, you know, might take more of a couple of years. I'm thinking more like the pickleball and botchi courts, but failing the plan is planning to fail, and while, while we may not know where the exact funding is coming from on that right now, I do think it's great to have that in the plan itself, and then we can work toward that. But overall, I'm pretty pleased with what I'm seeing on that, and looking forward to all the ribbon cuttings.
And I still want to know, how did you get all three permits? I think you're doing a great job. I think the, the work plan is good. The one thing I would put in here, it is the nightmare that the bids come in, not necessarily for the first phase, but for the second phase, and tariffs have jacked up utility or costs or something like that. So making sure we have some recognition of the, the need to have contingencies as we go forward. I'm sure you guys are all thinking about that, but we're in a weird time, and sometimes you get a deal when you put things out to bid in the middle of a recession, but sometimes you don't. So just being ready for that. And I think I agree that the, focusing on the big projects that we have been pushing over the line for years, it's important to get the planning going on what we're going to do with that, but if I, if it's push comes to shove, and you can only do one or the other, I'd focus on getting the things in the ground that we're working on right now. And with that, we will move on and talk to Jamie. De Finney?
All right. I'd, I'd like to see us look at the e-bike issue, and if there is something we can do more proactive at the city level. I know we're education, I hear the things we're already doing, but if there's a way we can bolster that with, you know, local ordinance or something that would help the police department keep, keep our kids safe, because I, I just, I see these e-bikes as just disasters waiting to happen with, you know, having three young boys and seeing the way the, especially the young boys are flying around.
Councilmember Silva?
I think my comments were wrapped up in cert neighborhood watch and business crime prevention, is just making sure it's not a pamphlet that goes on the shelf and in a rack car, any, in the rack carts.
Councilmember Francois?
Great work. I, I'm, I'm excited about the traffic safety working group and kind of all the other initiatives that the chief mentioned. I'm glad to hear that we have the crime prevention specialist on board and that we're going to be getting kind of some dedicated resources towards preventing crime and also the use of technology, which the chief has always championed. So I think we're moving in the right direction. If, if there's an opportunity, it sounds like there's going to be, there was the, the town hall at Ross Moore and some tabletop drills. I always, I always, we, you know, when I was mayor in 2022, we did a, an evacuation drill, starting in Ross Moore and ending at Heather Farm. I don't think you can do too many of those, you know. Lakewood's probably another neighborhood that could use one, and, and so we just advocate that we keep that in mind, if, as resources permit going forward.
Mayor Protam?
I made my comments pretty much during the questions as well, but good job, keep it going. People pay attention to crime and safety in Walnut Creek, and I appreciate the work that PD is doing and continues to have in their plan.
Yeah, and I think, I, I doubled down on the e-bike comment. I think that is something that we are just one heartbeat away from scrambled brains on the sidewalk somewhere, and I don't want to see, you know, I want to get the message out to kids. I saw a young girl riding down to the pool today on her e-bike with her helmet hanging off the handlebars again, down Mountain View, which is like, really? So do, set up speed traps around the swimming pools during the summer, during the swim season, and you'll get a lot of e-bike violators. So that's my comments on that. City manager checking in with you, do you need anything?
No, I think we're good.
You think you're good with the, the direction? All right, so now we're at the point...
Can I?
Yeah.
These are great programs, and not everybody watches TV and listens to us talking about them. One of the things that could, would be good would be, A, it's, they're going into the nutshell, but for example, the pedestrian and the bike, bike wait improvements, even having a big poster about that, that the council can take to the farmer's market, gives us something to, something to generate conversation. The same with the pool and what the rough timing of it is. The same, you know, just happy to help with that, but then we can keep the community engaged. And then when it comes time to gathering general feedback on the general plan, we can put the questions up on, on a whiteboard and have people fill out, fill something out, or we can bring laptops down and have people chain them to the desk, but have people...
Chain the people, or?
Yes. Well, actually, if we chain the people, they can't run away with the laptops. Anyway, just ideas.
All right. So now we come to the last thing on the agenda, which is the selection of the applicants to be interviewed for the unscheduled commission appointments. We have a really short staff presentation and then an assignment for us all. Speaking of first time to actually present to council? And thank you, guys, as you all head home and get your dinner.
All right. Good evening, council. My name is Llena Branson, deputy city clerk. This evening, we will be discussing unscheduled commission vacancies, the unscheduled commission recruitment process. We had six openings, one opening each on design review and the Contra Costa County Library Commission, and there were two openings each on planning commission and the Board of Appeals. Including in the agenda packet is a listing of all 23 qualified candidates. Additionally, the city council has received the full applications for review. At this point in time, it is council standard practice to ballot and select who they would like to interview at your next meeting, which is set for June 3rd. In the past, council had set a standard of interviewing three candidates per opening. The clerk's office has ballots prepared for each commission, so if you would like to ballot at this time or provide us other direction, you may do so. Choices are to interview all candidates, interview a select few, or direct the city clerk to go back and reopen the recruitment and try and find additional qualified applicants, or a hybrid alternative as you see fit. Additionally, we'll proceed with scheduling group interviews on June 3rd unless we are directed otherwise.
Okay, and Suzie and I talked about this last week, and as the mayor, I'm recommending that we go ahead and interview both Board of Appeal candidates. I know there is some concern about whether or not they actually meet the standard by some people, but I think it's worth it to go ahead and interview them. We have five library commission applicants. Suzie and I said, you could do all five at once if people, you know, unless people really have a strong desire to ballot on that one. On design review, we only have one candidate. He is not particularly local. Suzie was reaching out to him, but I recommending that we reopen the design review commission recruitment to see if we can gather some additional applicants. And for the planning commission, we are not going to interview all 15, so we need to do some balloting there. I think it's going to be important for us to have, we have two vacancies right now. I want to make sure we have a robust list of, to fill other vacancies, so I'm recommending we do two panels and we vote for up to eight people. You know, each of us vote to eight, and then see how it, how it lays out and pick two panels of people to interview, either three or four.
So how many are we voting for? Eight?
Eight, yeah. People down?
Are we not voting for the library alternate?
You know, I wasn't going to, I couldn't...
There'd be one panel.
There'd be one panel of five people, and I think we have enough time to do it that afternoon. So I'm recommending we just go ahead and interview all five of them. Reviewing them, they seemed, you know, all really interested in the community, and library commission doesn't have very specific requirements to it, so.
And what are you recommending for on the Board of Appeals?
I'd just go ahead and interview the two.
So what, what I would appreciate is that one of our, Erica, for example, describe what they need to be able to do.
But when we interview them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so that, before we interview them...
So that we're clear what we're looking for.
We're clear, because we've interviewed for this before, and we get very unclear in the process. I mean, this is no different than interviewing for someone to work in the ER and, you know, someone who is nice and really well-meaning and wants to be a community volunteer but doesn't know building code and says, well, I can learn it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll interview the two of them...
After we hear...
After we educate ourselves on what exactly we're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
As a procedural, we're voting tonight, and then as far as the structure of the interviews themselves, we'll be discussing that prior to the interview process, or?
What we'll do is we'll go ahead and set it up. Suzie and I will work together and set up the panels. We usually interview people as a group with standard questions, and so we will vote tonight. We'll have, we're getting, working towards our break, because after we've voted, we'll give them to Ellen, and she can tally them, and then we'll look for a natural breakpoint to come up with who we're going to interview. and she can tally them and then we'll look for a natural breakpoint to come up with who we're going to interview. And then Suzie and I will put together the process on how we do the interviews.
Will we have an opportunity to submit questions that we'd like to ask?
Um...
Or?
I mean...
Yeah.
Mayor, what we've done in the past to staff has provided us with the list of questions that staff recommends that we ask because, and then we agree on which questions and we can submit others, but we agree on all ques, on the questions upfront.
So it'll be a discussion process that we'll have about what those questions are prior to the?
It's usually, you know, you'll get the questions from staff ahead of time. If you see something that you're not, you're not getting in there, um, we can add it in as we're going forward. Any other questions? People comfortable with the process? All right. I, we've got, we've got a band of all-stars here, so.
As a point of clarification, does, does it sound like you have, um, consensus on the three other commissions? And you would like to do the motion now for those three and then do the ballot? Or motion for those other three after we do the ballot?
I will make a motion.
Okay.
That we interview the two candidates for the appeal, that have applied for the appeals board, that we reopen the application for the design review commission architect. And that we interview all five of the applicants for the county library commission.
And I will second that. Rule call?
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Devini?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Darling?
Aye. And so now, what's Kevin going to do? Take a picture of his paper and?
Yes. Mayor Protem Wilk will be emailing me his, uh, ballot of eight that he will select. We will print that and have him sign it as his ballot, um, when he returns.
Okay, so we will pass out the ballots and when you have voted for your up to eight planning commissioners that you want to re-interview, then you can take your break. And then we'll come back and, um, agree on who we're doing.
It's getting cold in here.
Yeah, when it gets turned down, it really gets turned down.
The public works director is solving the heat problem.
Not in any order, just, uh, to be, is that right?
Yeah.
And now we'll take a five-minute break to allow tallying. All right, we are back in session and Deputy City Clerk Branson, can you please provide the results of the ballot tabulation?
Absolutely. On the screen, we have the ballot tabulation. Um, this included six candidates receiving five votes, one candidate receiving four votes, and one candidate receiving three. Um, there were two candidates that received one vote and then the rest received none.
Okay. I like it.
Move to, move to interview the candidates on the screen.
Second.
And double check, any public comment in the, no, okay. Rule call, please?
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Devini?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk?
Aye.
And Mayor Darling?
Aye. All right, so now we are, um, through with that. And I'd like to adjourn tonight in memorial of former supervisor Federal Glover. Um, he's an old friend, um, somebody born and raised in Contra Costa County. Began his years of service in the city of Pittsburgh, serving on several city commissions, just as we did tonight, followed by serving on the city council and as mayor. For over two decades, he served the people of Contra Costa County District Five with distinction, including serving as the chairman of the board from 2004, 2008, 2013, and 2017. As a supervisor, he helped improve the quality of life for residents in his district, the rest of the county. Uh, some of the great things that he did, he initiated the regional efforts in East County to secure funding for Highway Four widening and the E-Bard extension to Antioch, which just was a huge quality of life for the folks out there in East County, to the tune of a billion dollars he, in funding that he got for that. He was all about youth and his county youth conferences, which give young people a chance to air their views to the community leaders, get valuable information about careers and education. It's a great example of that. And he had sponsored seminars and symposiums, economic development efforts to improve the business climate and job opportunities in East County. That was something he felt deeply. Um, I first met him years ago when he was on Delta Protection Commission. I was just some little punk staffer. And years later, when he ended up on my husband's, um, board at, uh, Delta Diablo, he remembered me and he said, hey, how are things going in the Delta? That was just who he was, is he paid attention to people around him. And he, you know, paid attention, made people feel like he was caring about them. So on behalf of the city of Walnut Creek City Council, we extend our deepest condolences to the Glover family and his friends and all those who had the privilege of working with him. We honor Federal's life and thank him for his many years of service and dedication to the Contra Costa community. And so we are journeying into closed session, so we are journeying in his honor and now we are going to adjourn into closed session. Subject to nobody commenting on it. Anyway, thank you.